I'd like to welcome you to the September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty board meeting. It is five thirty P. M. And I call to order the board meeting of this date. This meeting will be conducted in two parts. A special board workshop to review the district's strategic plans. We will begin the meeting right now with executive session. Upon the conclusion of executive session, we will begin the board workshop. This portion of the meeting, the workshop, will last approximately two hours. Upon conclusion of the board workshop, we will continue agenda items of the regularly scheduled meeting. I do know that we've had some people contact us about citizens' participation, and that will be in the second half of the meeting after the board workshop. So I just want to let people know it'll be just a little bit before we do that portion. Do I hear a motion to enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one, and a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility purchase?
Madam Chair, move that the board enter into executive session to consider employment recommendations for the two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one year and a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility purchase.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous, and we are now in executive session. And I'll ask everyone to step out of the room, and then we'll call you back in when we've concluded. Thank you. At this time, we'd like to welcome you all back. It is still, last time I checked, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. It is now about six thirty-two, and we are going to adjourn executive session and begin our workshop. Do I hear a motion to conclude executive session and begin the general session?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor of opening in general session, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. It is now six thirty-two P. M., and I call this meeting to order. We are meeting tonight in compliance with the governor's orders, CDC recommendations, and the town of Lexington ordinance. The auditorium has been thoroughly cleaned and sanitized before the meeting, and will be after the meeting as well. District staff will also sanitize the microphone before and after staff presentations or individuals speaking during citizens' participation. All board members, employees, or other individuals in attendance are encouraged to social distance -- oh, social distance, and we ask that you maintain a face covering at all times. There is limited seating to maintain social distancing. Once that seating is filled, attendees are asked to go to the staff development room, the overflow room, where they can watch the movie -- meeting virtually while observing social distancing guidelines. The public is encouraged to watch the meeting on our YouTube channel. After the meeting, the district will follow its previously established process by posting a video of the meeting to the district's YouTube channel, Lexington One video site, and our own website. I would like to inform you that we are in compliance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. We have notified the media of the date, time, and place of this meeting, and I think we have some media with us tonight, do we, Ms. Hill? Great. Okay, great. Welcome. We're glad to see you. We have not had one of you guys in a long time, and we used to have somebody at every meeting, so we're glad to see you. I would like to let you know that the district tapes the meeting for accuracy in preparing the minutes, and at this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Oswald, who will lead our invocation and our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Oswald?
I'd like to start out with a brief inspirational read by author L. R. Nass. I thought it was very appropriate during this time, and then I'll follow that with our prayer. "Do not be dismayed by the brokenness of the world. All things break. All things can be mended, not with time, as they say, but with intention. So go love intentionally, extravagantly, and unconditionally. The broken world waits in darkness for the light that is in you." I welcome you to pray. As we strive to navigate these difficult times, we humbly seek your comfort and guidance, dear Lord. We realize that our best efforts come when we are united together as a community, as a state, and as a nation. We pray for you to help us to embrace that unity as we work together to keep our children, our teachers and staff, and our families safe during this pandemic. We also pray that we will strive to demonstrate love, compassion, and grace as we seek solutions. For those that feel despair, let us be the ones that provide them with hope. For those without understanding, may we be the ones with patience and diligence so that all can understand. For those that feel forgotten, may we be the ones to extend our hearts with love and concern. Where darkness invades, let us be the light that prevails." We ask these things, Lord, in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. That was beautiful. It is now time for the approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second? Thank you, Ms. Green. Are there any questions or comments, Board?
I just have discussion about item number four. I just want to say we're not in compliance with the Freedom of Information Act because we continue to talk about things in executive session that aren't covered. They're not confidential.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Okay, so we had that comment. All in favor of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. At this time, we're going to go to six point O., which is the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty progress review. That is the purpose of this workshop. Each year, the superintendent and administration provides a report to the board on the district's strategic plans, its progress and goals for the current year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Dr. -- our superintendent, Dr. Greg Little, and he is going to take it away. Dr. Little?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And again, I appreciate the board's flexibility for today with last week being really incredibly difficult to try and make the board workshop with the first couple of weeks of school as well as the holidays. So thank you for your flexibility. Over the last few months, we have really been focused on reentry, about providing each student a rich, robust, and rigorous learning experience, while at the same time providing for their health and safety of both the students as well as the adults in the building. I want to say tonight that I feel like our strategic plan has really played an important role in that because it's helped us maintain our focus. It's helped provide that direction that we so desperately need, and we've been able to keep our vision and our mission at the forefront. So our vision being empower each child to design the future, and our mission being that we want to cultivate a caring community where all learners, and we capitalize that, where all learners are extraordinary communicators, collaborators, creators, and critical thinkers. Now, despite the fact that we've been navigating these uncharted waters, it's provided us with, again, that sense of direction. We think about it as a true north, as a compass on where to go, and even as a sounding board when we're working through different ideas that we are as we're moving forward. And so while COVID nineteen has really driven most of our conversation, and will continue to do so, and rightfully so, we would -- tonight, we want to look at, we want to start looking at some data points that we think indicate we made a lot of -- we made a lot of progress last year, and Dr. Phillips is going to come up and talk a little bit about that and about how our district achieved and how we were able to move that vision and mission forward.
All right. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Little. It's that time of year again. So as Dr. Little has said and everyone else has said, the nineteen-twenty school year was a year like no other. That doesn't -- that doesn't change in the world of accountability and assessment because it presented some new and interesting challenges with regard to measuring progress. I'm typically a very quantitative guy, often to a fault, but the scarcity of standardized test data and the educational shifts that took place at the end of last year have caused us to redefine those metrics and methods we use to evaluate progress. And that's a good thing because standardized tests should never be the sole determinant of progress of any school or district. And we recognize that as a district, and that's reflected in our strategic plan because we use multiple measures to look at our success. So we're going to be looking at our progress this year through a variety of different lenses. We're going to look at student achievement. We're going to look at rigorous course enrollment, special populations, and some things we're doing with them. We're going to look at career and technology education and discipline. So we'll go ahead and start with our proficiency in E.L.A. in math. Now, again, we are without S.C. Ready because of the school closure last year. So typically, I'd be telling you about S.C. Ready scores and how we did this year compared to last year, where we don't have those scores. So what we do have is our formative assessment system, STAR three sixty, which gives us a pretty reliable predictor of performance in reading and math on S.C. Ready. They've done studies aligning those things so that they can come pretty close in that prediction. So we ran the predictions on students' most recent STAR reading score to look at the percent of students scoring meets or exceeds compared to the prior two years. And as you can see, in reading, those percentages surpass the prior year, the prior two years in all cases. So in the area of reading, we've made some significant progress there. Now, one of the reasons we might have made some of that progress is a focus on early intervention. So the district has invested personnel and time and professional development and funding in reading recovery. If you're not familiar with reading recovery, it's an intensive intervention program that's one-on-one. It works with the lowest readers in first grade. Now, again, we did not have any end-of-year text level scores last year. So what we did here to show how well this is working is we went back to our first cohort of grade-one students who participated in reading recovery and compared them with those students who did not have reading recovery. So I don't know if my little pointy thing is working here. It's not. Okay. It is? I didn't see it. Okay, there it is. I get it. Okay, so the green -- the little orange dots here, red dots, are those students who participated in reading recovery, and the green line is their trend line showing growth from the end of first grade, when they finished that reading recovery program, to the end of their second grade. Now, the purpose of this graph is to determine, is that intervention that they got in first grade sticking? And this indicates that these students, over their second-grade year, showed a greater rate of growth than your typical students. That intervention lasts for a single year, and so those kids are continuing to improve at a steeper rate than kids who do not get reading recovery. As required by the Read to Succeed Act, we have to provide a summer reading camp experience for students who are at risk of being does-not-meet in reading. So those lowest students, again, in third grade. So what we see here is just the growth during the summer reading program of this past summer. So, oh, sorry, showing their text level at the beginning of camp and their text level at the end of camp. So you can see there's some growth in here in text level, and it's an average growth of one point two text levels. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean anything in and of itself right here. So let me explain a little bit further. So in prior years, we -- the summer reading camp was exactly that. It was a camp, and that camp lasted about six weeks, about four hours a day, four days a week. So they got twenty-four four-hour sessions, and they served about a hundred and fifty kids roughly each year. The average text level change during that camp was one point oh-two text levels, okay? This year, due to COVID nineteen restrictions and concerns, we revamped that program and made it a virtual, one-to-one, focused instruction program that really focused on individual student needs. It lasted twelve sessions of thirty minutes each online. We served two hundred and thirteen students, forty-two percent more than we did the prior year, and got one point two-four text levels of growth this summer. So being the nerd I am, I ran a statistical test on that, and it is statistically significant difference between those two models.
So -- Dr. Phillips, is that with the same F.T.E.s assigned and the same cost?
That's a good question. I do not know the answer to that.
It was the same F.T.E.s, but the important piece is the quality of the F.T.E.s. We've been able, every year, to use the same teachers in our summer reading program, and that's made a big difference.
Okay. So let's move on to math. Math, again, we had to use STAR to estimate those S.C. Ready levels, and as you can see, in every grade except for grade three, we had -- we made some substantial progress here. Grade three showed a little dip over last year. It's a little bit higher than two years ago, but it's slightly lower than last year. So one of the things that we're doing is, again, focusing on that early intervention piece. We are piloting a program with a formative tool called iReady, which gives a lot more detail than our early primary-grade teachers are used to getting with math on STAR early literacy. It's going to give them a lot more information about math at those younger grades and some instructional resources that will allow them to push those kids up at those earlier grades to get them to where we don't see that little dip. All right. Okay, so our takeaways for student achievement are this with regard to E.L.A. in math. With the exception of one grade level, and that's grade-three math, achievement has been trending upward, and we feel like a lot of that growth is due to early intervention, particularly with reading recovery and with our Read to Succeed camp model, which we'll be exploring even further. All right, so the next piece we'll talk about is rigorous course enrollment. So the district has invested a great deal of effort into increasing access to rigorous coursework opportunities for all students. At the end of the nineteen-twenty school year, enrollment in dual-credit coursework has grown from three hundred and fifty-seven students in seventeen eighteen to five hundred and twenty-six students at the end of last year. This year, we have enrolled, right now, five hundred and ninety-three students. Now, from a course standpoint, that growth is from nine hundred and eighty-five courses taken to fifteen hundred and forty-two, with sixteen hundred and forty-four being enrolled right now. So when you take that into college credit hours, our kids last year earned a total of four thousand six hundred and twenty-six credits, which we estimate at a value of about two point three million dollars of savings, college savings, potential college savings for parents. I.B. follows a similar trend. Now, this is a admittedly very small group of children, but this program is of the highest rigor and quality, and it's good to see that these kids, that more and more kids are enrolling in that program each year.
That's their enrollment year, not the red question.
That's correct. All right.
We're hoping, too, with the I.B. programs in our middle and elementary schools --
That that'll grow even more.
-- that will -- because I've always -- because I've been on the board since we introduced I.B., and I always thought it was a little odd that you started with high school instead of pushing up, so I'm real pleased to see us do that.
Good. So the access to rigorous coursework is also increasing for underrepresented groups, particularly our students of color and students in poverty. So you'll see that in honors coursework in high school, we had seven hundred and fifty-four students in two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. By the time last year ended, we were at nine hundred and forty-four. That's a twenty-five percent increase in those students enrolling in honors coursework. And A.P.I.B. is even better. It's a forty-seven percent increase, up from two hundred and six students to three hundred and three for our students of color, our underrepresented students of color. All right, so along these lines, the students participating in dual enrollment overall is up almost fifty percent, so forty-seven percent, and the number of courses taken is up fifty-seven percent since two thousand and seventeen, eighteen. Students of poverty used to, in seventeen eighteen, represent only about eleven percent of the dual enrollment students. That is almost doubled now to twenty-two and a half percent. And students of color taking at least one A.P., I.B., or dual-credit course has increased by over thirty percent over the past three years. All right, moving on to our special populations, and what I'm talking about here are students in response to intervention and special education. So one of the innovative approaches the district has taken to address the need of special populations, namely these RTI kids and special ed kids, is a shift from a pull-out model where students are removed from the general education classroom to receive support to a push-in model where a teacher comes into the classroom to work alongside the general ed teacher to provide those supports for students. This has given some opportunities that weren't there before. So, for example, RTI has moved a full -- to a full implementation of push-in at the middle school, and what they've seen is that students have more opportunities for exploratories, and there's more of a link between the intervention support and the core curriculum. So instead of those things existing in isolation, they're now together, and instead of teachers feeling like when they're removed from the class, they no longer are their responsibility or they can't have any control over that, they now are working together with the support person to improve the education for that student. And there's at least partial implementation at all of the elementary schools. You can see here where we are with that. For special ed, this past year was a little more of a developmental year, so there was a lot of piloting going on, so with reflection tools and collaboration procedures, doing learning walks to see how things were going in the places that were piloting things, and PD and coaching for those teachers. Now, there was some implementation at some schools, and what they are finding is effects, positive effects for special education teachers, general education teachers, and administrators. So here's some of the benefits that special ed teachers saw. So first, they were able to get better information to parents about student progress because they were in the general education classroom with those students, and they were able to provide strategies that the general ed teacher may not be familiar with in real time. They're able to keep track of kids with regard to the standards just by providing that differentiated instruction, and this was important. They felt more included and needed by the general ed teacher, and they didn't feel like an intrusion. And again, they were able to work with gen ed students to better gauge levels at which their students were able to work. Now, the general education teachers felt like they were getting more support by the special ed teacher, and they were able to work cooperatively with the special ed teacher to use data to drive their instruction because, again, the teachers there, and it's real time, and they're able to conduct small groups that were more individually tailored to the kids in those groups based on their IEP needs. And then administrators got some additional training. They found that they had a better-developed trust between the co-teachers and the administration, and they were able to do some deep data dives with those sped teachers to help them get the data that they needed to provide the general ed teachers. The third group we'll talk about here is our English language learners. So the number of our English language learners tested each year on the English proficiency test, ACCESS, has gone up slightly over last year. The percent of students meeting their progress goal, each student has a progress goal based on their starting point, and so the number of students meeting there, or the percent of students meeting that progress goal, actually dipped slightly, although it's not a drastic drop, but the number of kids who are scoring proficient actually went up slightly, okay? So the takeaway from this is that the number of our E.L.L. students continues to rise. Results remain relatively consistent over time. Statewide, districts often operate E.L.L. programs with very limited resources. We continue to outperform similar districts in this area. One thing that we've done is that, beginning this year, we have sort of revised our strategy for leveraging Title IV money, which is additional support money for different groups, and to the Title III grant rules, okay? So Title IV could be used to fund other title programs. Title III is your E.L.L. fund. So by leveraging those additional funds, we were able to provide personnel, so to additional E.L.L. teachers in some of our schools with the higher populations, and we were also able to provide some online English instruction software for our lowest kids in the form of Rosetta Stone. Next, let's talk about career-based learning. So it was an interesting year for career-based because of the closure. Most of your certification exams happen at the end of the year. So we had an increase in completers from sixteen hundred and forty-five to seventeen thirteen. Our non-traditional participation, and that would be those courses where typically they're all female or all male, and you have the opposite participating in them, is up slightly, and our students with at least one certification is up, about two hundred kids. However, the number of certifications you'll see is down quite a bit. Well, there's a reason for that, right? So many of the certification tests were not available at the end of the year. Talked to LTC about that, and they indicated that teachers had been working all summer to get those tests rescheduled and administered so that those kids could get those certifications. So we look forward to seeing those numbers actually jump up a little bit here in the fall once those tests get administered and scored. And then finally, we'll talk about discipline. And again, discipline data, if you look for the whole year last year, was a little crazy because amazingly, discipline incidents dropped off very sharply on March seventeenth. Everybody started to behave. No? I need to survey parents about referrals at home. So what we did was we looked at discipline data in the August to March period for the -- for three years, so that we were kind of getting a comparable look at these numbers. So what we have here on the top is the percent of students in our population with one or more discipline referrals. So that's gone from twenty percent slightly down to nineteen point seven percent. And then for our students with -- And then for our students with one or more suspensions or expulsions, that has stayed pretty much the same over the past three years. So what you see here is that these discipline rates are remaining consistent over time. Obviously, you always want to see things like this go down, but they're not increasing. So that's good news, too. Okay.
I think, too, and does that factor in that we've had such an increase in student population?
It's based on a percentage of students.
Yeah, so it would.
So we try to take that into account. Okay, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions you guys have.
So Dr. Phillips, you've probably already thought about this because you think about everything. But as you were talking about the rigorous coursework and like the dual credit and the AP coursework, you know, I have two children in college now, and I'm very mindful of anything that we can do in our schools to save parents' money in college. And I think there should be some consideration given to somehow incorporating those students that earned the seal of bilinguism into those numbers because like my daughter, she didn't do AP Spanish. However, because of the Spanish curriculum that we have in place, she got her seal of bilinguism. And then when she got to USC and took the placement test, she placed in the sixth semester of her Spanish coursework. And so I think that seal of bilinguism might be a good indicator of rigorous coursework in foreign language.
Noted, and I'll be happy to provide those numbers if you'd like it a later time.
That would be great. Thank you.
State giving us any feedback about when the standardized testing will come back online? I mean, are we expecting it in the spring or January?
So, yes. So the superintendents received a letter from Secretary DeVos that was sent to Molly, I think last week maybe, or this week, that basically said, "You can write a waiver, but we're probably not going to give it to you." So this year, we have worked with schools to plan to give every standardized test that is required by the state and the federal government. The state has said that we are to provide those tests in a face-to-face setting, no matter what model your student is learning in. So our Lula students will have to be brought in to actually take those tests in a face-to-face model. Now, one thing that the state is working on is potentially a waiver for the accountability piece so that we would take the test, but they would get a waiver this year for the report card again, given the situation.
All right, thank you, Dr. Phillips. We appreciate that data review. Now, a moment ago, we talked about our strategic plan. Well, part of our strategic plan included portfolio projects. Now, portfolio projects were really an essential component of our efforts. The goal of the portfolio project, remember, is that we wanted to identify important work that could advance our district's work quickly. And we would really consider that a high-leverage strategy. Now, portfolio projects are not designed to stay portfolio projects. They are designed where we put the spotlight on them, we put them under the microscope, and then the process and procedures that come from those portfolio projects turn into standard operating procedures. Well, this year, we are actually going to wrap up two of our portfolio projects. And when we say wrap up, it doesn't mean we're going to quit doing them. It means that the work that we're doing is now really part of who we are as a school district and a part of that standard operating procedure. And so I would like for Mr. Caldwell to walk us through Project Hope, and then Mary Gaskins will walk us through leadership development.
So it is with great pleasure that I am hopefully talking about Project Hope for the last time. As Dr. Little said, Mary Gaskins said, "We're tying a bow on this one" because an initiative is just that. It's a thing, and we tend to pilot initiatives, and we tend to watch them float away from the pier, never to be seen again. And I think what we've shown over the last two years with Project Hope is that it has become ingrained in our standard operating procedures. So thanks for that introduction. It stole most of my thunder, but that's okay. Just a quick history lesson. In the 2017-18 school year, we found ourselves engaged in several conversations. There were separate conversations around social and emotional learning for students and supports there because we had suffered through a few tragedies in our district. We were also talking about student management procedures, particularly with respect to drug and alcohol offenses and how we handle those disciplines. And then the Alternative Educational Services, which at the time was called FOCUS, and we were looking to repurpose that to make it a much more therapeutic and less punitive type environment. So we're having these separate conversations, and then we realized we're kind of all talking about the same things, just different sides of a triangle. So that's how the whole triangle came to be because all of these situations lend itself to one another, and without any one of the three parts, then the triangle doesn't work. So I just want to very quickly tonight talk about some of our successes and some of our challenges with Project Hope. And again, reiterate the fact that nothing that we've been doing is something we're going to stop. We're going to continue doing it, but we don't have to talk about it as something that's new or something that's an initiative, that's just our standard operating procedure. So the first part with respect to student management procedures, and again, this is the drug and alcohol offenses. And if you'll remember, prior to Project Hope, a student who had a drug or alcohol charge, almost always, if he or she did not get expelled completely from school, wound up at what we then called FOCUS. There was some counseling that was provided, but basically what happened is that the students would spend some time there. They would come back to school, they would often recommit, and we'd just scratch our heads and go, "Oh, gosh, I wonder why that happened." And so then we took this, what at the time I felt like was a very bold step, in that what if we had those students who had a drug or alcohol charge, and depending on the totality of the circumstances, we allowed that student to return back to school? But as a commitment to return back to school on probation to their home school, the parent and the student had to agree to several things. They had to agree that the student would go through pretty stringent counseling for drug and alcohol. The family had to agree to go through family counseling. And the student had to agree to be randomly drug-tested for a year. So really, the sanctions we placed on those students were more than we placed on them when they went to FOCUS at the time. But what it allowed is that student continued to be in the band, that student continued to take French four, that student continued to do all the things that he or she had the privilege to do while at his or her home school. And so when we talk about a success rate, what that means, that 75% success rate for the 18-19 school years, that means that 75% of all the students who we deemed Project Hope students were successful, meaning that they successfully completed, and by this time, the 75% have successfully completed because it's two-year-old data, 75% of those students completed. For the 19-20 school year, which again abruptly ended in March, 83% of the students had either successfully completed or were successfully engaged in that. And at this point, I need to share something with you that's probably pretty obvious. The counseling and the drug testing and all those things stopped in March with the onset of COVID. I'll also tell you that as we continue to move forward with our reentry plans, it is our plan next week to bring to the board several policies that may need to be reviewed, that may need to be adjusted. And one of those policies being our drug and alcohol policy. And so I am planning on bringing that policy and perhaps some others for your consideration and possible review next week. So I want to tell you that right now because we have not yet begun to drug test at this point. We would not have begun to drug test at this point in normal circumstances. But this year is anything but normal, so we feel compelled to discuss that policy and some others to get some guidance and direction. So that'll be coming next week as a part of our reentry conversations. For Alternative Educational Services, it was renamed AES. And the overall goal of this, the overall vision, was a place where you just don't go there because you've been assigned there because of a discipline issue. Our goal was to have a true alternative educational school or facility where we could provide the type of education that students need. And so with that, we repurposed the way that program works. And Chris Raven and his team were able to provide a lot of social and emotional support for the students. I will tell you, Tracy Fender will come in in just a few moments and talk about social and emotional learning supports district-wide. I'm speaking specifically about what happens at AES now. And so those students go through restorative practices. They do a lot of conflict resolution. They do a lot of community building. If you'll remember, we dealt strongly and swiftly with the what. You know, what a student did, if a student made this decision, then that forced us to make this decision. But we never got to the why. And so our whole goal was to, again, to not be that punitive place, but to be that therapeutic place and try to get to the why. So we've developed triage teams where every student, you know, within a week or two period while at AES, would have a team of professionals, including the parents and including the students from time to time, to talk about their project, to set goals, to check progress of the goals. So, and what we've learned, fortunately, is through the COVID shutdown, if those students didn't go away, they just didn't show up at AES. And we continue to work with those kids, and we were able to continue to provide those supports virtually. And I think that's very important to know that we did that now. And it's even more important to know as we talk about the future of AES as a true alternative educational service. Another thing that we're very proud of, and Chris Raven is just over the moon with this when I talk to him about, you know, "Give me some things to talk about. Give me some highlights of your year." Well, in the 18-19 school year, he reports that 267 students who were eligible to earn credits, mainly high school, but we do have middle school students who can earn high school credits, 267 students earned a total of 246 credits. This year, or the 19-20 school year, 228 students earned a total of 401 credits. That is a 63% increase. And keep in mind, excuse me, some of those students had worked through AES prior to the shutdown, but a lot of those kids remained on the rolls and remained, you know, being worked with, with the teachers from AES. And again, just an awesome 63% increase for the credits. And I think that lends itself and is telling of the social and emotional supports that are there and the strategic ways that these students are being worked with and getting to that, again, getting to that why, and not just the what. Moving forward, again, we want to continue to have a virtual presence post-COVID. I tried to pin Dr. Little down, and he would have no part of it, when I asked him one day. So when all this is over, we're still going to have, you know, virtual education, right? Because this really falls right in line with my vision of what, and others' visions, of what AES looks like. And so I really want to urge us to do that because that does play a part in this alternative educational system for our students. Again, it's no longer an initiative. It is what we do, and we want to continue to fine-tune that and refine our practices there. And just to remind you that it is now a part of our normal course of business, a very integral part to providing educational opportunities for all of our students. So I am proud to say that this may be the last time we have to talk about this as an initiative, but hopefully I can talk about the results, the positive results that come at later dates from our new practices here.
I'd just like to say, I think that's one of the most important things that we've done in a long time because that's been a gap for us. And I just thank you and thank your team for making that happen.
Thank you. I will tell you, we talk about students who probably will be eager to go back to face-to-face learning, and I'm certain that's the case. I would also say there are students there that are having success now, virtually, that they've not had before. They're not dealing with particular challenges. They're not being bullied, they're not being made fun of, all the things that may have caused them to not be as successful face-to-face. They're now finding that success virtually. So I want to be sure that we have, we continue to have that presence. Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now Mary Gaskins will walk us through leadership development.
Thank you. And I get very excited when I talk about this work, so I'm going to stick to my notes tonight, so I stick to my time. I want to say first that the work of the executive leadership program really began in the fall of 2016 when we began planning for our first cohort for aspiring principals. That work had such a meaningful impact that it began a ripple effect that continues today. While our executive leadership program remains in a constant state of design and revision, we have established enough of a foundation that it is part of our intentional culture now in Lexington I. As a reminder, the intended outcomes of the executive leadership program are listed here. We are building the capacity of our instructional leaders to increase student achievement, outcomes, and opportunities. We are committed to creating equitable learning outcomes for all adults in the system regardless of where they lead. We want to retain our high-performing employees, knowing that if we don't give them opportunities to stretch and grow here, they may decide to lead somewhere else. We are also continuing to develop more transparent and rigorous hiring processes. And ultimately, we are creating opportunities for staff to take ownership of their own learning with the leadership development process. With those outcomes in mind, we developed a leadership continuum and competency-based standards for four key roles. For each role, we have created multiple pathways for development and feedback aligned with the leadership standards. As I shared earlier, every new aspect of the program reveals additional opportunities to expand and enhance how we develop our leaders. Every time we begin a new program, we get ideas for the next one. Dr. Little jokes that you can aspire to aspire for a role here in Lexington I. Tonight, I want to highlight two of the programs where we really advanced our work last year, the new leader induction program and our teacher leadership work. 2019-20 was our first year of fully implementing our new leader induction program. The program is designed to help APs and principals who are new to the role or new to Lexington I transition smoothly and successfully. This graphic represents all of the supports provided a new principal. The program begins with a three-day onboarding institute and is followed by cohort learning sessions throughout the year where new principals come together to learn. They are also provided with leadership coaching from their level director, Vanner Thomas, another principal to serve as a peer mentor, and just in time, central services support throughout the year. For example, during the budget and hiring season, those topics are the emphasis of our cohort learning sessions where we bring in both experienced principals and central services leaders to facilitate the learning. We have also developed some centralized resources to make it easier for new leaders to get access to what they need. Our supports for new APs are very similar to this except they get coaching from their principal instead of from the level director. Since it was our first year of implementation last year, it was very important for us to get feedback from participants. Overwhelmingly, we heard that the relationship-building and networking aspects of the program were the most valuable. They were so glad to walk into a meeting and already have established relationships with other members of the cohort, with mentors, with central services leaders. They also appreciated understanding things like how to use the district data dashboards, practice with giving and receiving feedback, scenario-based learning, and who to call for what at central services. Based on their feedback, we've made some adjustments for this next cohort of new APs and principals. First of all, we've changed how we select and support our AP and principal mentors this year to really strengthen that relationship. And we're also revising the cohort sessions so that they're more aligned with our state induction program and allow for practical application. In terms of teacher leadership, the Teacher Leadership Council's Teacher Leader Working Group continued to work on more consistent roles and responsibilities for teacher leaders across the district. Using the role descriptions that were drafted during the 18-19 school year, they spent last year getting feedback and making revisions. year getting feedback and making revisions to these four teacher leader roles. They also spent last year determining consistent selection criteria and resources, which includes the opportunity for any teacher to express interest in a leadership role. While three of these roles already exist in the district, and our goal was just to make them more consistent, one role is completely new, the Peer Ambassador role. And this is the one that everyone seems to be most excited about. The teacher leader will, this teacher leader will coordinate a, a system of support and act as a trusted partner for new or new-to-the-school teachers. The need for this role was expressed by several working groups of the Teacher Leadership Council. This past January, the Teacher Leader Working Group wrote a letter to SLT seeking approval for these four roles and outlining the support they were requesting aligned with their responsibilities. In March, we met with elementary principals to begin to outline a transition plan to these consistent roles across schools. We planned to meet with secondary principals when we faced the school closure. When the closure was extended and we began to understand how hard it was going to be to reenter school, Kimberly Freeman and I met with the working group facilitators to determine our next steps. With all the work that has gone into this, they were concerned about this getting lost and wanted to wait and implement it at a time when we could do it in a targeted and meaningful way. So our new plan is to begin transitioning to these roles in the 2021, 2022 school year. Since the selection criteria and resources have now been developed, schools will have access to what they need to begin that transition this spring in preparation for the following year. Also, that will give the TLC Working Group this year to also continue to develop the support resources that will be provided for teachers in these roles. I'm sharing just a few of the comments from the feedback we received from teachers. As we studied these and other comments, we were encouraged that the feedback aligns with our intended outcomes for the leadership program. As I shared in the beginning, we know that our executive leadership program will constantly expand and be revised, but we feel like a solid foundation has been established. Upon the foundation, the next step is for us to consider how we can offer leadership development opportunities for our support staff members, especially for those who are in or aspire to be in a manage, managerial or supervisory role. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
I, I would just say thank you. Of all of our portfolio projects, I think if we had not doubled down on developing internal talent, both with the economic boon that was present two years ago, and I mean, teachers were leaving and principals were leaving because, I mean, they had other choices, as well as this COVID pandemic, which essentially has forced some people, or scared some people out, I don't know if we would have had the stability of our educational model like we have today. So again, I think this has benefited us in two different situations, and, and that's the whole point of this, is we don't even know what the third situation's going to be. But we got to grow that leadership talent such that the teams on the ground at the schools can adjust the situation and keep the team engaged, because, I mean, they have choices and, and we want them to choose Lexington One. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gaskins. So as we, as we were moving throughout the school year, I feel like I'm the narrator of this whole thing, but as, as we were moving throughout the school year, of course, we came to March. And when we were going through our distance learning experience in the spring, we learned some valuable lessons that would really ultimately serve as the building blocks for how we ultimately responded in the fall. So in the spring, remember, let me set the stage for you just a little bit, remember we had three days to prepare? We were living with the stress and anxiety associated with a global pandemic and mass quarantine. And as we lived with that fear and anxiety of that time, I, I must tell you, I'm incredibly proud of the work that we did during that time. I'm incredibly proud of how our staff came together, the effort that they put forth, whether it was feeding students, whether it was creating model lesson plans from scratch, often by themselves and with very little prep time. They did all of this work because they saw they needed to step up and help serve their community. And they were doing it at the same time while many of them were looking after their own children, or looking after elderly parents, or having other responsibilities at home. And so they were juggling any number of balls in the air and trying to make all of this happen. So having said that, I think it's important, though, that we still learn from our feedback. So if you'll remember, we sent out a survey and we, we requested feedback on how we could have improved that process and what we could look for in terms of turning our attention to the fall. And so what I have for you tonight is each presenter is going to share, so we're going to have one, two, I think there are six lessons. And every presenter is going to share a lesson that we learned from that survey, and then how we've responded to it and adjusted our plans in the fall. So that's how that's going to look for the next few minutes. So we're going to, this is going to be like a speed dating round with everybody coming up and sharing some different, some different aspects. So we'll start with Mary Beth Hill, because our first lesson was about communication.
So the first lesson was that, as Dr. Little said, that the district should frequently seek feedback from stakeholders regarding their response to crisis situations. So the district began gathering information from parents and students using surveys regarding their experiences with the e-learning and other materials and methods like student packets, starting from March 16th through the end of the year. So we did a Hanover Research Pulse survey of 3,928 parents, 189 students, 1,535 school-level staff, and 174 district-level staff. Eighty-eight percent of the school staff and 75% of the district staff felt that they were very well-informed. Well, we did focus groups as a follow-up with parents, doctors, students, teachers, nurses, support staff, other groups. And then we started to get some information that they wanted to participate more, they didn't want to just give a yes or no answer. So we looked into something called Thought Exchange. The National School Public Relations Association partnered with this company to offer districts across the nation and Canada an opportunity to use what's really more like a virtual town hall than a straight survey. And so they did it for free during, during the pandemic because they realized that districts needed a different way of getting feedback from their stakeholders. So after researching this, Dr. Phillips and I discussed, proposed that the district participate, and we did. So keep in mind that it's not a survey, so unlike a survey, you have to first give your thoughts about a specific open-ended question. Our question was, what are the most important things we need to think about as we prepare to reopen schools in the fall? So first of all, they provide their thoughts around that question, and then they're encouraged to read and anonymously rate other people's thoughts. So 8,666 parents provided 13,573 thoughts, and they submitted 302,163 ratings of other peo, peoples, other parents' thoughts. The staff had 2,466 staff participate. They provided 4,195 thoughts and submitted 104,555,000 ratings of other peo, other staff members' thoughts. So obviously, we got some great participation, but we learned some things, too. So how infor, well-informed did they feel like they were, parents? 61% of parents felt very well performed, informed. 41% felt somewhat informed. So that's 92% that felt there was some level of being informed, that was good. However, they were very specific about, they liked the opportunity to give, uh, more opportunity to share their opinions. So we're planning to use it again. We learned that that was a really good piece of software for us, so we have participated in that, and we'll be using that to gather some feedback as we go forward, determining how we're meeting those needs in the future. So some of this confirmed what we already knew. I'm not keeping up with my slides. Catherine, you want to run the slide? So some of this confirmed what we already knew, and so you'll see that we have always notified our board and staff and first, whenever possible, when we're messaging. We created seven Together Talks with Dr. Little, which have received a combined total of 50,239 views. There are more intimate video conversations with Dr. Little and special guests, and we created some other video messages from the superintendent, such as a message about hope in April, a message to graduating seniors in May, and a welcome back message in August. Then we added mini chats because they started asking questions about specific areas. So Zan Tracy Pender, our school counseling advisement director, talked about social emotional learning. Chief Academic Officer Dr. Tally talked about Leap Days, Principal Nicole Mitchell about online registration, and we got over 3,082 views on these mini chats. Then they wanted to know where they could find information. So we knew that whatever type of information we used, consistency was key and then availability was key. So we wanted to make sure that we were providing, we kept providing inside voice with something that we always had done, and then we beefed it up. Lindsay Mitchell, our social media and web content manager, created a COVID-19 page, webpage on our site. Since its inception, it's had 21,863 views. To put this in perspective, the homepage of our website in March had 76,900 views. That's the first page. So the entire website traffic began to pick up as you would think it would in the middle of a pandemic. And so in April, we had 92,021 views, May, 102,936 views, and then we layered the Stronger Together website on, because they wanted one place to go for back-to-school information. And once we did that, that page alone since June 3rd has had 130,662 views, and it's drawn more traffic to our website. So we had 101,015 views in June, just on the homepage of our website. So the whole traffic picked up, as you can see. So they began to let us know, though, parents did, and they mentioned it again, the Parent Advisory Council last night in the small group I was in, that they're getting a bit of message fatigue, and we recognized that. So we worked to share often, but not flood them with information, and we began to use little bits of information and deliver them through texts. They, we found that parents really, really received texts well, they opened, had lots of opens and views. One of the highest things we did was text, sending a link to text, uh, text message reminders. And then we shared links to other documents, and they liked the simple, short how-to videos. So we created some of those show-me-don't-tell-me kind of things. So we added those straightforward videos that showed what a school day would look like when you dropped your child off, what does classroom social distancing, masking, hand washing look like? It was our highest-watched video in August with 5,054 views. YouTube, 91 shares on Facebook, 40 shares on YouTube, and 12 shares on Twitter. We did one on masking and social distancing for staff, because with Plexiglas, they were confused about whether they still had to mask, and obviously, you're masked and you have Plexiglas. We pushed out to parents and staff colorful one, two-page flyers. You'll see those online, daily schedules, typical day as an online learning academy student, top 10 things you need to know as we head back to school, week one by the numbers, things like that. So we continue to do that, but what we learned is if I send an email out with information, I can expect to get anywhere from 500 to 1,000 email back. They have really asked questions. So we've spent a lot of time creating question-and-answer documents, they've asked for new question-and-answer documents last night in the Parent Advisory Council. So we continue to respond to what they are asking for rather than just assuming we know. Any questions?
Hey, this is Jada. Thank you. I have one question about Thought Exchange. You gave the results for the parents, but did you have the results from the staff?
Yes, we have, do.
Oh, you gave the percentage. 61% of parents felt well-informed and 31% felt some-informed.
So I don't know if I brought that with me, but staff did participate very highly. Let's see. I did, and I can get that for you, though, because we did have that in our information.
Okay, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I like on Facebook when a parent asks a question, that almost immediately y'all pop the answer on there. And because a lot of the same, parents have the same question, so I feel like when you guys answer it, you know, it really helps everybody that's looking at that. So I, I think that's great that y'all are so instantaneous.
We've had, the staff has been great. I just got to tell you, they've worked crazy hours, I mean, crazy hours. And they have worked very hard from home, from the office after hours, they've just been wonderful. And producing the quality of stuff they produce in this time, a lot of districts have called us. I had a district from the east, the west coast call and ask, could they use one of our documents? Did we mind if they copied it? So I mean, that's real compliments. We've been in a national publication, mentioned, our Stronger Together website was cited. So we're really pleased with what we've been able to do in this kind of environment.
Ms. Hill, I want to comment, the, uh, week one by the numbers, one-pager, I love, love, loved that. I shared it on Twitter and on Facebook, and I have a number of folks that I know that are teachers in Tennessee and North Carolina, they shared it and tagged people in their district, hey, did you see this? So that was excellent. That, just, you know, so much informative data, clearly depicted with good graphics.
Right. I want to, I want to give credit where credit's due, that was Catherine's idea. So this is Catherine McPhail, our communications director, and she did a great job working with Lori Petten, our office, who's our artist extraordinaire. And so they did a great job getting that together.
Infographics like that are a great way to get a lot of information out.
Thank you.
All right, thank y'all very much. Uh, let's, let's go ahead and we're going to try to move as quickly as we can here. We're lesson number two, the state and district need to address the digital divide. And Dr. Tally, talk to us about our response to that as we plan for the fall.
Thank you, Dr. Little and members of the board. This is speed dating contestant number two, and I'm happy, happy to share with you tonight. Lesson number two, which was the state and district need to address the digital divide. One of the greatest challenges we faced last March was continuing to support, to support and educate our students during the abrupt closure. As you know, our normal school year ended in March, but we had a commitment to continue to support and serve our students, and that's exactly what we did. It was an all-hands-on-deck effort, parents helping their children log on to Zoom meetings as teachers had to learn the ropes of virtual education on the fly. The digital divide was exposed as schools arranged for laptop and hotspot distribution for students who had neither a computer nor access access. So we immediately took the following five actions to help the district bridge a gap that if not filled will continue to widen with the lack of instructional support for our students, and I'd like to talk about each one this evening. First one I'd like to talk about is devices. With the onslaught of COVID-19 in March, the ratio of three-to-one Chromebooks for grades three and four and one-to-one for grade five was insufficient for supporting one-to-one virtual instruction. As the end of the school year approached and federal funding was provided through the CARES Act, it was very clear that elementary schools needed to be one-to-one. The district proposed purchasing Chromebooks for, for grades three and four. CARES Act funding did not become available until July, and device lead time was 110 days. These Chromebooks for grades three and four, we hope, will arrive in October. We repurposed district iPads for, for K through two for individual use. Each school had 30 iPads per grade level. All of the middle school and high school iPads were moved to elementary schools, and 220 iPads were purchased with remaining CARES Act funding, as well as 350 iPads for elementary teachers to prepare curriculum and teaching. The second action step we took was around connectivity and hotspots. The State Department, through the Office of Research and Data Management, offered district hotspots for four months, from September through December. This required the district to carry the plan from January 2021. from January 2021 through June 2021 if a family uses a hot, using the hotspots, wishes to continue the use of the devices. Our district requested 800 hotspots. To date, 520 have been distributed. And we are working on distributing the rest as soon as possible. Thirdly, virtual classrooms. As soon as the pandemic hit in March, teachers and central service staff began using the free version of Zoom for reaching out to students and staff. Instructional technology sought an enterprise-wide license for the Lexington One domain. This was secured through an official bidding process over spring break. And as you well know as a board, Zoom now plays an essential role in supporting the virtual classroom as well as all learning and professional development. Numerous software products have been purchased to support virtual classrooms. And we are working on a plan to purchase monitors for our virtual teachers. Fourthly is the help desk. High schools, when they began one-to-one technology, they had help desk resources in place with both a full-time help desk and a full-time technician. Middle schools began one-to-one with a full-time technician who also serves as a help desk resource. This is challenging for middle schools, especially for middle schools with high enrollments. Our elementary schools began one-to-one with no full-time technicians and no help desk. Elementary technicians serving at the district support two schools each week. Our hope is that ultimately, we will be able to add nine additional technicians because those are needed to have it, to have one at every elementary school.
Dr. Tally, is there any way we can leverage the CARES money, CARES Act money, and fill those positions? Is that what we're looking to do?
We are, we can look at that. We'd have to make amendments, but we're certainly looking at every, every corner.
I know it's one-time money, so it would be interesting to how we would go forward with it. I know that hopefully, I think some more of that money is opening up. I think.
Fingers crossed. We hope so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
And then the fifth action was in special ed technology. We have ordered specialized technology with supplemental IDA funds. That was provided to us in June from the State Department. We've ordered that for targeted support to provide speech, occupational, and physical teletherapy. And that has worked very well for us. We've provided iPads and Chromebooks for instructional assistance support for special ed student instruction during our e-learning days. I can commit to the board that we will continue to monitor and react to the digital divide so that all of our students have access to the tools they need to be successful. Thank you for letting me share this lesson. And now Natalie's going to share contestant number three, lesson three.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board. I'm really excited to present to you today one of my favorite topics, which is instruction. So the third lesson learned for us coming out of the spring is that teaching and learning in both a virtual and distance environment must be meaningful, engaging, and accompanied by accountability. And as you know, we had to change dramatically how we taught and learned in the spring. And our teachers and school administrators, our coaches and content coordinators did a yeoman's job to make that happen. But we also know that we can learn and improve, as I've discussed before with you, when we, when we discuss reentry. So there were four kind of themes that came out of the data when we studied instruction in particular. And the areas of growth for us this coming year, or this year, we're finally here, are providing meaningful and relevant learning experiences for all students. We also wanted to make sure that we were providing meaningful accountability and feedback for learning, that we were committing to consistent and clear expectations for all stakeholders, and that we were implementing a flexible and a resilient instructional model that could go between face-to-face, hybrid, and virtual back and forth. So as you know, that takes a little bit of work because we're continuing to adjust and learn how to do this. So for us, the way we decided to respond was to provide a number of supports and conditions for teachers and students. And one of those in particular is providing deeper instruction. And we define that as learning experiences that are challenging, engaging, and empowering for all students. To make that happen, our professional learning communities at the school level and the district level have been identifying essential learning and priority standards. They're aligning summative unit assessments to those priority standards. And now PLCs are working to collaborate around formative practices, practice, and assessments, and aligning those to the work they've done this summer. To make that happen, we are also looking at engaging and being responsive to student need. And we're doing that through committing to the workshop model or the student engagement model, which is what we've always used as our instructional model in classrooms. We're also intentionally developing the whole child by focusing on supporting our power skills and social emotional skills alongside academics. To make that happen, though, it takes a lot of professional learning and collaboration at the school level. So we are doing some intentional work around implementing the workshop model in a virtual environment as well as face-to-face. We're also working with schools to provide support around frequent formative feedback to monitor academic progress. We're looking at how to support teachers in building classroom community in a virtual space that's brand-new for them, as well as how to manage virtual classrooms with things like routines and norms and celebrations. And then thinking through how to structure advocacy time to support power skills and social emotional skills like self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. To empower students and to engage them this year, we are also doing things like supplementing their instruction with print texts, children's books, and other manipulatives when they're at home with e-learning. We're providing clear calendars and schedules as well as routines on how they engage in synchronous and asynchronous learning. And teachers are providing ongoing communication to parents about progress on student work. So let's dig into that one a little bit because if you remember, one of the lessons learned is around providing feedback to parents around expectations. So students will still receive grades this year and will get progress reports on their learning experiences throughout the year. And like they do every year, schools will be communicating how that will look to families this year. In general, our focus at the district level and the support that we'll be providing to them is thinking about how to provide quality formative feedback in both formal and informal settings. So this growth-based feedback will tell students, families, and teachers exactly where students are in the moment, which is important because we haven't seen them since March. We'll know exactly where they're strong in terms of content. We'll also know where they need support in order to grow. The key to that feedback, though, is that it's frequent, ongoing, and descriptive. And so that will help teachers and caretakers to know how to help children to self-reflect on what they know as well as help them goal-set on how to get better. So that's a little bit about instruction.
And now I'm handing over my friend Howard.
As Howard is coming to the microphone, I just want to take this opportunity to thank him and his team for all of their work in creating Lula, our Lexington One Online Learning Academy, essentially from scratch. Nearly 7,600 kids, I believe, is where we have ended up in that number. And Howard, I realize you've been toiling very much so behind the scenes. And so again, I just want to say thank you to you and your team. And we could give Howard a round of applause, please.
Dr. Little. Madam Chair, Board members, I am, I'm here to address lesson number four, Staff's Parents, Parents and Student Needs Training and Virtual Learning Tools. And first, I just want to say that in looking at where we needed to head with this, we had a coordinated effort with, with Dr. Smith's office and our digital learning coaches, our, both our teacher and instructional leaders across all schools. And this, this coordinated effort took place over the summer to address the needs of our stakeholders. We recognize that our preparation would need to keep us agile as we plan for an unknown environment, knowing that we, we would have to shift as, as our environment dictated. And, and the approach was to, to keep it simple and focus on foundational tools that would be relevant regardless of the mode of instruction that we were in and we might be in for, for any given amount of time. So we looked at, trying to keep it simple and designing and facilitating teacher training in four core areas. To focus on a grade-level-specific learning management system that would serve as the hub for, for student learning and parent communication. To focus on the ability of teachers and students to engage in a synchronous video conferencing tool like, like Zoom. And then a third piece was to look at the tools that would allow us to create and collaborate and communicate and facilitate digital workflow through Google products like Docs and Drive. Thanks, Josh. We also knew it was important for us to be able to develop and create asynchronous materials like, like Screencast and, and virtual discussion forums because we don't need to be live on, online all the time, whether we be in a e-learning environment or a fully online environment. And so collectively, this gave teachers a foundation for managing an online classroom, whether it be hybrid or, or virtual. And so we added strategy-specific sessions for building online communities and supporting student social emotional learning. And these sessions were offered throughout the summer and were made available then again asynchronously for teachers to access when they return to school. And, and all that professional learning then was made available as a part of the school-specific professional learning plan when teachers came back. So they had an opportunity to engage over the summer and then to create a baseline, you know, across the board for, for proficiency and, and implementation. Then that was included when teachers came back for that, for that first week on their, on their contract. For, well, let me go back one more. I don't want to, I want to speak to the, to this e-learning leads concept in elementary school. To, to address and support the specific needs in elementary school this, this summer, a group of our digital learning coaches led a cohort of 34 elementary teachers, and it's two per elementary school, and led them through a focused sequence of training that spanned really the entire month of, months of June and July, and prepared those teachers to earn a Google Educator Level One certification and to serve as an instructional leader, prepare them to serve as a leader in the use of digital learning tools inside of their school this fall. And so that's an effort to build some capacity in-house at our elementary schools for instructional technology. And then these leads maintain a digital learning coach point of contact to help them answer questions and, and to provide support into the, into the elementary schools throughout the fall. And so that was a way for us to try to address some support in elementary schools while leveraging our, our current staff and human resources in place through our digital learning coach team. For parents, we provided a number of support resources for parents over the summer and leading into the fall here to help them become more familiar with some of these tools that, that we may have had in use for a while and, and some newer ones as well. We have resources available on our district website to, to help our parents kind of navigate the different devices at different grade levels, different learning management systems, some of the different tools that they use for synchronous communication or asynchronous communication. And really, a majority of the parent support that's taking place is coming directly from our schools, right? You know, they're, they're working directly with the people in their own communities and answering those, those questions that come up directly from the school. Now, that might be in the form of an online hub on their website. There's some pretty impressive support resources out there on school websites. But also, a, a good bit of it is coming directly from, from the staff inside of the school. And our, our teachers and digital learning coaches have been just truly amazing in their efforts to show just grace and, and patience and perseverance as they're walking through a number of different questions and, and procedures with, with parents on the phone or, or via Zoom to help them, help them with their needs as they kind of orient themselves to, to some of the new environments that we're, we're experiencing here this fall. Students, we're, we're continuing to provide them onboarding sequences at the beginning of this year. It's important, particularly if you're, you know, a sixth grader or even a ninth grader, then you're receiving a MacBook for the first time, to learn the, just the basics of that, of that new machine. But really, maybe most importantly, we try to keep it simple and build routines and procedures, especially with our learning management system. We want to establish consistencies so they know where to go for communication. And they understand what the basic digital routines are so that they can submit work, pull work down, interact and collaborate with their, with their peers and, and with their teachers, and, and exist inside of an environment that's, that's powered by technology. So that learning management system really becomes the hub for communication and resources and assignments. And then this year, we introduced Zoom video conferencing as a, as a new tool in our digital ecosystem. You know, when you're, you're face-to-face, you know, you have that, that luxury of, of having, of having some contact with, with the students on a regular basis. But we've done a really nice job with leveraging this tool and doing so in a way that creates really meaningful experiences for students, particularly when teachers are able to structure it in a way that pulls in smaller groups of students, right? And, and can really tap into a, a small group experience and conversation and focus in on, on the individual needs of, of smaller groups. And so again, our, our teachers do really an amazing job using the resources that they have to, to navigate these, these new environments and teach students to use these tools as they, as they outline and, and roll out their expectations for them in, in those environments. And so as we move forward, we know that we want to add some additional things to our district website and enhance the parent support that are on there. Quite frankly, we'll be looking at some of the things that our, our schools have done to provide some of those, some tool-specific tutorials on, on the, on the school pages, which are really directed towards the expectations in those communities. There's some really terrific stuff out there. But generally speaking, the, you know, in a district our size with, with such a profound emphasis on digital learning, that really the most strategic approach for support is to build capacity for, for use within each building with, just for exemplary practice and, and impactful collaboration. And so we'll, we'll continue to collect feedback from the field and then, and respond to the needs that emerge from those data and, and, and react accordingly. I'd be happy to take any questions.
I, I would just like to say, everything I hear is so positive. In fact, I think in the last two days, because I forwarded them to you, we've had emails asking, are we going to continue this second semester? Because the parents are really liking it and say it's working out well for those who chose it. So thank you and thank you to your team. It seems to be, I have not heard anything negative. Not one negative thing about the virtual program. So have you?
As a parent with a child doing Lula, it's been phenomenal. I mean, really just as smooth, really even smoother than I expected. No hiccups, no, I mean, the, the teachers have been extremely responsive to his contacts to them. The Zooms have been great as he's moved the last two weeks, more asynchronous. I'm actually seeing like, you know, some self-direction and management of his time. He did one way last week and decided he wasn't crazy about how he had broken up his day. So he said, I think I'm going to try something different this week. I'm like, wait, we might actually have a little bit of, you know, maturity here. This is great. So I just love it. It's been, it's been fantastic.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you both. We're, we're, we're learning things every day and we're driven to, to continuously improve as we, as we work through, well, I guess is, what I guess the third week of the, of the school year. But we're committed to making this an, an option and a viable option for, for, for students for, for some time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bissell.
Thank you.
And our lesson number five is going to be brought to us by Mr. Van Bowers and Dr. Thomas Rivers. It's a speed double date.
All right, testing. One, two. All right. So as I said, takes two of us to handle this lesson. And this is an important lesson about how we communicate with students. When our, when our. When our instructional model had to change abruptly in March, it was important that we made sure that we were getting information from the field. And so through a series of surveys and focus groups, we developed three growth areas. And these were that we need to emphasize the importance of constant personal communication with our students. That is so important to make sure that we're communicating regularly and making sure that we're keeping them in the instructional family, in the school family. Also, we know that we need to develop watch lists of educationally and emotionally and physically at-risk students. And we certainly have been able to do that through our RTI and mental health teams as well as our district dashboard. Yeah, thank you, Thomas. Sorry about that. Yes, thank you. Sorry about that. And also, we felt it was extremely important that we maintain regular check-ins with our students through teachers having office hours or designated times in the day where they were touching base with our students. So as we think through this and we develop some action steps that we are certainly carrying on today, we were able to take advantage of leap days in August. And these were five days that the state allowed us to bring in students early. And this was very important, these were very important days where we brought the students in and we addressed their social emotional learning needs. It's just get to know you again. You haven't been in school for several months, and this is the way we do school. So we had to talk about new procedures, new safety procedures, and also wearing masks. And we also took advantage of some of that time to do some instructional benchmark assessments that the state requires of us. So we really had a great opportunity to bring those kids early. Also, we're able to feed them breakfast, lunch, and provide transportation for them. So I just want to give a shout out to all of those departments who came together in a collaborative manner to really make that happen because that was a huge undertaking. Also, during this time, we were able to get a jump start on some of our IEP and 504 meetings to develop instructional plans for our students. And also, another thing that we're very proud of in our schools is that schools have protected times in their schedules where we address social and emotional learning of students. This comes about through morning meetings, through crew time, through advocacy groups. It's different in certain schools, but we have designated times where, you know, we can spend with students addressing social and emotional needs. Our principals did a wonderful job in their communications with students and families over the summer. They really, really learned a lot about how to use social media and communicate with their families and students. Many of them made special videos that they sent out to their students, and the kids really enjoyed seeing those videos. Teachers, the same, lots of school messenger notices and emails and phone calls, and in many cases, personal visits. I know that I myself even took several personal visits to deliver packets and meals. And again, it was just a real collaborative effort to do that. And speaking of meals, can't say enough about our food service folks, our bus drivers once again for the feeding sites that were set up throughout the summer. And not only did that do a wonderful service in making sure kids had something to eat, but it also gave us the opportunity to do that check-in with kids, and they get to see their teacher and their principal and just folks that they haven't seen in a long time. And that was certainly very productive. So Dr. Rivers?
Okay, grab the mic. All right.
We're going to continue with the action steps under Lesson Five. And the next one, if you recall, when we went out in March, our principal and teachers created videos and parades, and we continued that throughout the summer, just make sure we had constant interaction with our students. There was a positive time for students and teachers to engage in those type of things, to connect and communicate with our population that was out there. The next one is kind of key part now, where we are with things and students coming back to school. They work with IT to identify families that need hotspots for internet services. Of course, when we left in March, many of our students, especially elementary schools, they needed paper packets. And so a lot of families and students would do not have the connectivity. And so to increase that communication, we now have hotspots available to all of our families. So everyone is one-to-one. And so even those students who are in Lula, those students who are in hybrid, they have a device in their hands. And with the assistance of a hotspot, they can connect with families and they can connect with teachers constantly so that communication is ongoing with our students and staff. Schools' principals met regularly with staff to make preparation for reentry. Zoom is kind of our friend now, so we learned more about Zoom over the summer, just like the entire nation. And so summer planning began with principals talking with teachers, meeting with administrators, getting ready for the school year. So they communicate just as much as teachers are now communicating with students, just to get ready for their reentry and those reentry plans.
Dr. Rivers, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Can we go back to hotspots?
Sure.
I know each hotspot has a cost. And how are we funding that? Are we funding that with CARES Act money as well?
Yes, we are. CARES Act funding has helped us tremendously with hotspots for our families and for the students.
Do you know what provider we primarily use for those hotspots?
I don't have the information, Mrs. Salters. Steve? Okay.
I knew and I can't remember, but I can get that for you.
I just was curious.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I knew there was a cost associated. I just was curious about that. Thank you.
Okay, sounds good. We'll get that information for you.
And I think during Dr. Talley's report, she said the CARES Act covers it through December, but in the spring, we're on the hook for it. So, and we haven't deployed all 600 spots or whatever the number was, so.
But we are hoping to get more funding.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The next piece, school mental health wellness teams, and you hear more about that with Mr. Pender coming up. But those teams are essential to us identifying students who are experiencing trauma in their homes, who are just having some difficulties. And so teams at school come together and they meet administrators, psychologists, school counselors. They gather and try to identify students who need help, whether it's emotional needs or academic issues. And that mental health wellness teams allow us to connect with those students who are experiencing difficulties at home. When our e-learning days, and we love those Fridays right now, that's a great time for teachers to connect with students with virtual office hours. And so those are essential as a way to meet with students who are having some difficulty at home academically in their classes. So students are able to communicate with teachers, set up a time to meet with them virtually through Zoom, and they coordinate their schedule so they can kind of help those students. The next piece, school council departments conduct check-ins. And so you will constantly see surveys coming out from school counselors to parents and families to see how things are going at home. And so if there are some emergencies or some things that are brought to our attention, they can complete the survey and that goes back to the council so they can do some check-ins. So those are some things that we've done with this, where we are now with these action steps to get ready for and have that smooth transition back into school. So lessons learned since coming out in March, we've kind of moved forward. And so what we conclude is that communication is the key to keeping everyone informed and ensuring, to ensuring parents and students feel supported and connected to the school family. And so we can't stress that enough. We have to stay in constant contact with our families, with our students, to check on their mental well-being and social emotional support so that they are and feel connected to us even when they're at home and they're not in school full-time. So the more we communicate, the better off we are as a school district working with our families and students. Any questions you have, Mina?
And Dr. Rivers, I'd ask, we also maintain a focus on our children's physical health. Specifically, Sheriff Coon lamented a little bit, you know, when school went out in March, we become a very important safety net for a lot of the children in our district and making sure that they're safe at home. So as we engage them at home, I want to make sure that stays top of mind as well.
Certainly, certainly.
I do want to say Verizon is our provider.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Dr. Rivers.
We'll go to Lesson Six.
Our final lesson that we learned from our feedback and what we've implemented for the fall.
I will admit, this is lower than I thought it would be. I thought that'd be faster.
There are six board members here and there are six lessons learned. What are you trying to tell us, Dr. Little?
Just a coincidence, just a coincidence.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board, and Dr. Little. The next, the final lesson is access to mental health, physical and emotional services that we provided during this time and where we're going with it. So I started with Project Hope, the mental wellness teams. As you know, that was part of the initiative last year. We had them in place. So when we went to the shutdown, our teams continued to meet and help families. But a good part was Accelerated Ed Plan. It required a mental health component with a referral system and triage. So we were already ready to go when that accelerated ed plan came out. The other part was our Lexington County Mental Health School-based counselors. Of course, we put all those in place last year. So as we went to shutdown, they went to teletherapy. What I heard feedback from them was some of our kids opened up for the first time not being in a school or a clinical setting, so they gave us good information. They played a critical role when we had crisis, a death of a parent, a death of a student, a death of a faculty member. They gave us numbers, since it was crisis, they didn't need to be a client. They gave us numbers so parents and students could call. For our staff, they gave us actually a virtual counseling room. They could log in, the staff could have counseling service within five minutes. There were certain times, and that's what they provided for us. Employee Assistance Program. As we learned, our employees needed counseling. They needed confidentiality. So in July, our HR department launched the Employee Assistance Program, which is a very good tool, provides free counseling, both legal, counseling, referrals, even some other services. We have that now available to our staff, which is a good thing to have right now. Physical, talking about Deetta Broome, who is our counselor at Pleasant Hill Elementary. She does yoga. She created virtual yoga lessons for us, put it out to her school, her staff. That's now a resource we can use building on for the future to do virtual yoga lessons. Our limitations did occur as we moved to the virtual setting. Confidentiality is one of the big ones. When a student was at home, they weren't in an environment where they could freely share domestic violence, child abuse, et cetera. They couldn't talk to us as openly as counselors. So that was a challenge for us because we can't guarantee that child's safe. When we did our small group counseling, we couldn't guarantee that another child in another home wouldn't hear something another student says and share that with somebody else. So that is a limitation we have to deal with. Also, our access to students. We don't have them in front of us. We can't reassure them. If they have suicidal ideations, we have to work with our community resources to make sure somebody goes out and takes care of them. So it means a different way of doing business. But we also found out that some of our kids thrived in that environment. They didn't have to worry about how to get dressed that morning or who they had to talk to, what clothes they wore, and they were very successful. But at the same time, we had kids that struggled. They were socially isolated, they couldn't talk to one another, they had depression. So we had both sides we saw. Moving forward, we'll have a challenge with Aaron's Law. We'd had real good success in our district, especially at the elementary level, where the students share with us about sexual perpetuation, sexual assault, and we get them help. But Aaron's Law requires it to be done in a safe environment where you can't disclose. If we do it in a virtual environment, that may be the actual environment where the actual acts are occurring in. That perpetrator may actually hear what we say and groom the child and how to talk to us. So it's a challenge moving forward. Engaging with Compassions Project. We launched this just before we went to shutdown. We continued it. It's a partnership we have with Blue Cross and Blue Shield, University of South Carolina, and with Department of Mental Health. Only two school districts in the state were selected, some during Lexington One, so we're a part of that. We had eight of our elementary schools, four of them, where people from each school participate. It was some intensive training. What we saw over the summer, we had, we were trauma-informed, trauma-responsive, adverse childhood experiences. We had microaggression, how to deal with race relations, recovery rooms versus in-school suspension. But some of the things that stood out the most, we heard of tape, a 911 call of a small child reporting what was going on in her house. And then we had a virtual walkthrough of a house based on DSS complaints where we actually looked at what was in the house, identified what people saw. It was a powerful experience and what we learned. This is a two-year project. We're looking at expanding the funding to train more. And what we'll also use with Title II funds, we're going to train 25 of our school counselors and school psychologists to become Aces Train the Trainers. So we can train all the elementary and go beyond that. With Google Voice, when counselors, when we went to shutdown, how do we maintain our communications? They don't have district phones. So the counselors created Google Voice accounts. It gives them a phone number that they could share with students and families so we could call and make contact. And as Dr. Rivers mentioned, we did our check-ins and our surveys during that point in time. So we found out what they needed. That became a building block with our social emotional learning hub. What we did was district-wide frameworks and commitments. We had personnel from across all three grade bands build that up and look at it and make it work for us. Right now, we're doing our daily SCL check-ins. We are getting very good responses. With that two-minute check-in, kids are telling us more about what's happening to us than we've ever heard the first couple of days of school. We're finding out what's going on in their homes, what they need, what's happening, real good information. We just completed our universal check-in surveys for students and staff. That's required by Accelerated Ed, but we also include our parents in this district. Our social workers are going to be busy because we got lots of things about what parents need, not just the kids, what parents need. So we're going to do that. I wanted to remind the board that SCL is not going away because of COVID. It was talked about before it began and it will continue afterwards. Of course, our State Department's launched their website. Their initiatives require boards to look at how to incorporate in your strategic plan, have a two-year evaluation system, financial support, HR hiring practices. So it's not going away, it will continue. And the last thing I want to leave you with is something coming real soon, hopefully in the next two weeks or so. We will have our own Lexington One calming room. The California School Counselors created a virtual calming room where you could go in and have an experience in a relaxing environment. Randy Ludlum, my director at Caroline Springs Middle, she's creating this for us. What students will have, they can do quizzes and activities. They will have activities that are physical, like yoga and stuff they can do with somebody leading them. They'll have music and art. They'll have calming videos like fireplaces and ocean waves. Of course, my favorite, I like to go in and watch the animals at the zoo, all these different aquariums and animals going on. But that's what we're building coming real soon to us in the next couple of weeks. So those are what we've launched for social and emotional. Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question, Mr. Pender. This is Jada. I know you said with Aaron's Laws, there's some challenges moving forward. What are some solutions y'all have discussed?
Right now, we're waiting to see what happens second semester so we can do some more in-depth planning. We'll probably have to get with our legal counsel and make some decisions and go from there. I don't have answers on that right now.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, one of the sessions at the School Board Association was on the biofeedback rooms and how just a ton of research is being put into the amount of light that's in a room, simply having plants, the type of texture that you, where it's, you know, spatially arranged in the classroom. It was really amazing stuff. And the biggest takeaway I had was particularly for special education and kids who really struggle with stimulus and those kind of things, just the dramatic impact they saw from these, just a standard classroom that they created biofeedbacks in. The research was staggering. I'm sure you've seen it.
Seen some.
And it seems like it's a very low-cost kind of approach that gains a lot of benefit, if you will.
I'll keep that in mind. We'll look at a further from here. All right, Dr. Little, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, sir. What a wonderful job our counselors did as well, recreating most of their process and work from the ground up in a completely different from the ground up in a completely different virtual environment. So we talked about lessons learned, and now I want to talk a little bit about goals for this coming year. So much of our energy at the moment, again, has been getting school off the ground. Every process that we've had is completely different. And we're going to continue to put our efforts into helping school run smoothly and safely. That will, that's going to be a lot of the effort that we put in this year. And so what we decided to do in terms of our strategic plan is that we wanted to look at refocusing our work that we were doing last year. So thinking about things like our instructional framework, lab sites, and model classrooms. We continue to rethink intervention and special education services and also our school support teams from this year. So how these ideas will, and, and we want to ask ourselves and be able to answer the question, how will these ideas look in a COVID-19 world? That's going to be really the critical question that's going to drive us because it's not just about staying the course. It's about going deeper with the work and re-envisioning these structures as we also completely re-envision school. So how do these structures look? We know how they looked lots of times in 2019 or 2018. Now how do they look in 2020 and 2021 in a COVID-19 world where so much of it is virtual as well? So I want to take just a few more minutes tonight, and again, I apologize for the length. The lessons learned took a little longer than I thought they would, but, but I think it was incredible information and I'm glad we, we were able to do that. So I want to highlight four very quick things that we're going to look at this year that really deepens our work and enhances our work. Everybody has so much going on right now. The idea is not to do a bunch of new stuff. It's about going deeper in the work that we're currently doing. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Robertson. And he's going to talk about the SELF program, which is something we've been dreaming up over the last couple of years and that we're ready to implement.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Little, I'm pleased to share with you an exciting new program that we're beginning for the children of our Lexington One Support Staff Employees, SELF, supportive enrichment for Lexington One families. What is SELF? So SELF is designed to cultivate relationships with support staff members and their families and provide their children with the following: career awareness opportunities, academic and social emotional enrichment, and access to services, learning experiences, service learning experiences as well, and programs. So 2021 is actually going to serve as a recruitment year to identify the first cohort of participating students in this program. We plan to begin programming during the summer of 2021. Understanding that we need to start small and learn what works with our first cohort, we are prioritizing students of our food service, maintenance, and transportation staff, three of our most valuable support staff groups. We plan to expand and offer to all support staff groups, but need to start small and learn through the implementation of this first cohort. The program is designed for students in grades six through 12 and is designed to be sustained support over these seven years of schooling and launch a high school senior into college or career, a goal that aligns well with our strategic plan. So some of the goals of the SELF program, when we designed the program, we had several goals in mind as to why this program was needed in Lexington One. After meeting with a focus group of support staff from around the district as well as an action planning team made up of school and district leaders from all divisions, we wrapped the design around these goals. So one area of need that came out in our focus group and action planning team was to support students and families in the transition to middle school. Consistent access over time to academic and career enrichment opportunities such as camps, field trips, workshops, and so on throughout the year, and also through the summer months, was also a goal that we had. Sustained partnerships with families and parents and strong relationships with students are key. And we want to make sure that we continue to improve those relationships with students and their families. And recruitment and retention of high-performing support staff members is also key. We are hopeful that implementation of this program will aid in helping us meet these goals and other goals as they arise. SELF is designed to enhance students' experiences in Lexington One by providing enrichment for every student participant based on their unique needs, interests, and goals. What does this look like? One intention of this program is to create personalized support for each student participant. In meeting with students and their families, we will plan programming based on their needs and interests. This is not a one-size-fits-all approach. It is one that's going to be tailored to each participant and the unique strengths and opportunities that they bring with them. We will hold after-school sessions for students to take part in that will be held at the district's high schools. During these sessions, students will take part in frequent meetings with academic coaches. The goal of the program is to enhance academic and social emotional outcomes for students so they will also receive support from mentors and career specialists during this time. Our vision at this point is that these would take place, again, at feeder high schools. Just because school is out does not mean that we do not need to continue building relationships and communicating with our students. Participants in the SELF program will be matched with summer opportunities, including camps, job shadowing experiences, college visits, et cetera, to enhance their experiences in Lexington One. Check-ins with families and participants throughout the summer months will also be a priority as the academic coaches, career specialists, and/or mentors will stay connected throughout the summer with each of the student participants and his or her family. In order to support students in the program, we understand that families will be an integral part of SELF. We will hold onboarding orientation sessions with all participants and their families to discuss the dimensions of the SELF program and make sure families understand program goals and supports put in place. In addition, we will offer support in navigating district offered services and assistance in matching family members with the programs personalized to meet the needs of their students. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Hey, this is Jada.
Hey.
Hey. How are these students chosen? I know they're grade six through 12 and support staff students. But is there some kind of criteria?
So the criteria at this point is that they are going to be in one of those three groups that we talked about that I mentioned in the slide earlier, transportation, food service, and maintenance, and that the students fall into those categories. We're going to be sending out some surveys to folks to identify. And if we don't get response, we'll make sure that we go to great lengths to get response from everyone. So it'll be phone calls, it'll be face-to-face meetings as needed. But we want to make sure that as many students as possible can take part in this.
So all of those students are eligible as long as?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. I didn't know if there was some kind of other criteria that needed to be met. How was this originally established? Like, what set the groundwork for deciding what kind of program and what they needed in that program?
So we actually were inspired by a similar program that was started. We, we've had a longstanding relationship with Wake Forest. And one of the programs that they have is actually named SELF as well. And that program is, is a STEM-focused program. And we've had, again, we've had a relationship with Stan, and he's done a lot of professional learning with some of our elementary schools already. And so that was something that we heard about and we thought, hey, that could be a really neat thing for us in Lexington One. So we, we met with him a few times and we kind of modeled after his approach, but we really tailored it to our own approach.
Okay, thank you.
My only comments is I'm very excited about this. When I heard about this a year-ish or so ago, through some informal conversation, this gets me very excited. It accomplishes two things. One, it allows kids to achieve the American dream. It grabs kids that historically were on a different trajectory and we invest in them and put them on a different one. And to me, that's our leaders for tomorrow and allows us to be dominant in this world environment is to have hungry Americans that are talented and are fighting for something better. Two, we're working, you know, Ms. Gaskin talked about this, the parent, the teacher development that's just starting. I mean, we've been doing assistant principals and now we're working with our teachers. This meets a subclass of our employees and puts another hook in them as an employer to offer value of being part of the Lexington One family, which then allows us to keep and retain more talented people in that category, which only benefits our students and our educational offering. So it, it, it's a double win, in my opinion.
Absolutely. We're excited about it.
I guess I should ask, what is the cost of this program?
So at this point, we are going to be utilizing some funds that are already in district. Sherri Williams has agreed, because of the ties with career counseling. She's over our career specialists, and we have some designated funds from Perkins and from EEDA already in-house. So we're going to be utilizing those funds as well. And we are, the program coordinator for this is going to be an existing career specialist who is going to be taking this out on as an additional role. So it will not be a cost for a new FTE or anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Mr. Robertson. Very exciting stuff. This is, this has been on the, on the drawing board now, I think, for a couple of years. And so it's great to have it now seeing the light of day. And, and speaking of seeing the light of day, it's, it's nice to see Mr. Basket here. I know he's been incredibly busy ramping up the College Center at Gilbert. And while we did a lot of the initial planning and recruitment last year, this will be our first big, really implementation of that initiative. And so I did, I did want Mr. Basket to come and give a few minutes of, of, of the work he's doing.
Good evening, and thank you for that introduction, Dr. Little. Right now, we are serving, let me go to the slide. We are serving 17 students from three different high schools. So that is Pillion High School, Lexington High School, and then Gilbert High School. Interesting to note, we have, nine of those students are going to be first-generation college students. That is our primary focus and primary audience for the College Center is finding students who are typically underrepresented in college. Students who have diverse backgrounds culturally, racially, and also academically. And finding them and making sure they have the opportunities to get into rigorous coursework and have the support along with it to be successful.
Mr. Basket, I don't want to interrupt you, but I, I got chills when you said that. That is so exciting to me that these first-generation college students are participating in that. I just wanted to say that.
Sure. And you're, you're looking at one. I'm a first-generation college graduate. So I have an extra interest in this program because it's me. So I'm looking at myself 15, 20 years ago, and I'm the person that I wish I had when I was younger. So that's something that motivates me to, to do my best in this position. And some of the feedback we've gotten from students in this after the first week, many of them said that they were excited about the program because of AVID. So AVID is Advancement via Individual Determination. It is a program that previously existed at Carolina Springs Middle School. So they are in their second year of implementation. So they were one of the first schools to use AVID. And then this year, we have the College Center. We have White Knoll High School, who's in a planning year, Gilbert Elementary, who's in a planning year, and then also White Knoll Middle School, who's in their first year of implementation. So we have five sites right now who are AVID schools, three in implementation of those five. But in that feedback, students talked about the AVID elective and how it, it really focuses on what's called WICOR. So WICOR is an acronym standing for writing, for reading, excuse me, writing, inquiry, collaboration, organization, and then reading at the end. So in AVID elective, they work on those skills, and that is the support that they get to be able to be more successful in those rigorous courses. Because they're taking honors courses, they'll, they'll be taking AP courses and also doing enrollment courses once they get to their junior and senior year. And then even a parent who reached out to me, they were considering moving. And she said that this was a factor in them trying to stay because they're that excited about the College Center. So that's the kind of impact that we're having on families in the first three weeks of school. Going into the early college high school research, so that is a program that we're establishing and that vision is starting to come into, into shape. And most early college high schools have about 400, in the research I've done, about 400 students in altogether out of those four grade levels, nine through 12. So I've done some networking with some principals in the Charleston area and also in the Greenville area to learn more about early college high schools that are, are established and getting some insight from them with the early stages of building that foundation and then also some strategies they've used to grow and to sustain that growth. Whether it's hiring, whether it's planning your schedule, transportation, all those things. I've been able to learn more about it, get some wisdom from some people who have experience so that we can prepare that for our students in, in this district. Which leads me into the master schedule. So as of now, we are working with Gilbert High School's teachers and staff. There is not any exclusive College Center staff other than myself right now. So right now, we are just doing the best we can in, in sharing and, and working with the students. We have those 17 students. Four of those students are in the Lula program right now, so the Lexington One Online Learning Academy. And they will be back with us and they're planning to be back in January. So we have 13 who come on the AA cohort and the BB cohort total. But in that master schedule, in order to make sure we don't put a strain on Gilbert High School's master schedule, we may have to shift and do a separate schedule because of transportation needs. As of right now, our students who travel to Pillion High School and to Lexington High School have to leave at 2:45. That is the latest that we could get them back to their school on time to get back to their mode of transportation. So we're trying to be strategic and creative going into 21, 22 to eliminate that so we can get them either in on a, in earlier for the College Center on a separate schedule or find a way to get them back a little bit later or get, so we're working on that. We don't have a, a answer specifically right now, but we have had plenty of conversation in planning for that transportation. Because we do not want them to lose instructional time for transportation. Lastly, student recruitment. So it was a challenge to recruit in the spring. When things were shut down, we had to recruit, you know, via Zoom and phone calls and email. So we, we did a good job of getting the families connected to us. They, students did an application. They had an interview. And then we selected them based on the information and the criteria that AVID also gives us some criteria on how to find students in that academic middle. So that's something that we're going to do a little bit differently this year if things are, are better for us as we get to the spring, of identifying students based on their performance in eighth grade, contacting their families and them and their schools, and then it's, anyone can apply. But there is a criteria that we, that, you know, the first priority is going to be first-generation college students and students who are typically underrepresented. But anyone, any rising ninth grader can apply to the program. But as we recruit more students, we will need more staff. Gilbert has its own natural growth in their community. So bringing extra students to their school has implications on the master schedule, the staffing of the school. So those are things that we're currently planning and working closely with the principal, Jacob Nelson, at Gilbert High School and his staff to plan ahead so that we don't have any issues of trying to manage that next school year. And at this time, I will take questions.
Mr. Basket, this is Jada. Can you kind of walk us through the day of one of these students? I know originally, y'all are still in the College Center, which was the Center for Sustainable Solutions. But you mentioned you have teachers from Gilbert High. Do they come over there or do those students, are they in with the rest of the classes that the teachers have? How does that work?
Yes, good question. So students, a typical day, I'm going to use Pillion because they were here today on a day. So they arrive to Pillion, whichever mode of transportation they have, whether that's a parent drops them off or they ride the bus. They get to Pillion High School. There's a shuttle that brings them from Pillion High School to Gilbert High School. They get there about 8:30. It's been pretty consistent. They get there about 8:30. First couple of days, I greeted them to make sure they knew where they were going. We got their IDs to them, made sure they were okay, knew how to get to their classes, and they've really gotten immersed in the culture at Gilbert High School. So there are not any other teachers that come over. The teachers from Gilbert High School, they're already there. We have designated teachers who teach the, they were trained through AVID this summer who teach the English, you know, English, math, science, social studies. And then a counselor, the director of counselor was training, counseling was training, excuse me. So they're there, they're immersed in classes with other students. Most of the core classes, they travel together. The only classes they may not have together would be like the world language. Some are taking German, or some might have been taking French, or some might have been taking Spanish. So they, that would vary. But it also depends on what they came to the College Center with as far as credits earned. So that's where it varies just a little bit. But they're always going to be in their AVID elective class together. That's where they build that sense of community and they push each other to, to grow each year. But otherwise, that, they, they kind of vary with the courses, the, the credits they've earned. But they leave at 2:45 to make sure they get back to Pillion, and then they will get home how they need to. Or they play sports, or they do extracurriculars at Pillion as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Basket. So, and I will, very quickly, I just want to talk about the two new portfolio projects that we are going to begin to conceptualize this year. And we'll share more information with you at upcoming board meetings about how we are working on those and how those portfolios are taking shape. But again, I want to stress, this is not new work. It's extension and going deeper into the work that we're currently doing. The, the first portfolio project that we'll be working on is the All Means All Portfolio Project. It's about us being purposeful, strategic, and intentional about our strategic plan. And while we've made really good progress in these first two years, as you saw a lot of that today, we recognize that there is still work to do in understanding why some students in our, in our district are not being successful and are not in that sphere of success. So we really want to dig into that question to discover if there are avenues of support that we can create, if there are other barriers that exist. And so we want to, we're going to spend some time this year really focusing on that All Means All question and who's still not in the sphere of success in Lexington One. The second portfolio project that we're going to spend our time on as well, are, we're going to, we're going to go back to one of the original parts of our strategic plan, and that's in power skills. We're seeing real pockets of success across the school district. But it's some schools, it's some teachers that are doing it. The second portfolio project that we're going to spend our time on as well, are, we're going to, we're going to go back to one of the original parts of our strategic plan, and that's in power skills. We're seeing real pockets of success across the school district, but it's some schools, it's some teachers that are doing it really well. We want to ensure a greater sense of consistency across the district, both in how they are implemented and the support provided our educators to making them implemented. And we especially want to make sure that we understand how power skills are learned and practiced in a virtual context, because now that is becoming so much more of our reality. So through this portfolio project, it, really, our goal is to formalize the structure around power skills. We've defined them, it's taken the time to define them. Again, numbers of schools are really working great at it, but now what we want to do is we want to formalize that process. Dr. Gotten, you often talk about the chicken sandwich, so this is a, this is right around your, this is right around your wheelhouse, is the chicken sandwich around power skills. I'm not sure chicken sandwiches are, are no, are any longer on our diet plan, but you know, it has to be, I guess, in avocado oil or something like that. So in conclusion, as we look ahead for this year, I, I wish that I could tell you that we have clarity, but, but that we do not have that. The questions that we still have to answer are incredibly complicated, and they are more complicated by our living in a pandemic and living with COVID-19. And there are going to be questions that we're really dealing with that aren't going to have right answers. In fact, I know we'll have some, some citizens tonight who are speaking about complicated issues about how we come back to school and, and what does that look like. But it's going to be imperative that we continue to collaborate, build off of our teamwork, build off of that collective expertise and experience that we have, because truly, in fact, we are stronger together. So ladies and gentlemen of the board, that is the, the conclusion of our board workshop. I, I thank you so much for your attention tonight. I know it's going to be a late night, and, and thank you for your flexibility, and, and again, to the audience, I appreciate your patience as we're going through our board workshop.
Let's give all the presenters a round of applause, because they've done a lot of work to make tonight happen. Thank you, Dr. Little. At this time, we're going to take about, we're going to take a break until nine o'clock. I, I'll be honest, I have to stand up for a minute, so if we'll be back at nine o'clock, we'll go back into our regular board meeting, and then those of you that are here for citizens' participation, we, I promise we're getting to you, so don't give up on us yet. So we'll be back. Okay, board, we'll go ahead and get started. And I am going to ask if you will give me the privilege of moving citizens' participation up. So we'll do, we'll do seven point O, and then instead of reports and action items from executive session, we'll move citizens' participation there, and then we'll go back and move eight point O after that. Do I have a motion to make that move?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. It is unanimous, and we're going to just, just move the agenda around a little bit. So at this time, board members, you have received the minutes of the August fourth and the August eighteenth, twenty-twenty board meetings. Other than corrections that have been received and made, are there any other corrections? Okay, hearing none, the minutes will be accepted as presented. We're now going to go to nine point O, and I'm going to read the instructions, because there's some instructions, so if y'all will listen. Lexington County School District One's Board of Trustees solicits the advice and counsel of its citizens. To encourage this participation, the board provides a citizens' participation period during each of its regular monthly board meetings. In order to speak, you must be a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, the parent legal guardian of a student currently attending a Lexington District One school, or a taxpayer residing in the Lexington District One attendance area. You may comment on agenda items, school operations, policies, programs, and other matters. You may not speak about specific individuals, whether students or staff, and we want to remind you that this meeting is being live streamed, this part I really want y'all to hear, and that the recording of this meeting will be part of the public record in perpetuity. So I just ask when you, if you are going to talk about your own children, just remember that it is, it's live, it goes on the internet, and it never goes away. So just keep that in mind when you, when you do discuss things going on at your homes. We want to give everyone who came tonight an opportunity to speak, and in order to do that, the board chair will call on each speaker by name and ask you to approach the lectern at the back of the room. The board will not reply to your remarks nor take any action during the board meeting in response to your comments or questions. This is your time to talk to us, so we're going to be listening. You may address the board for up to three minutes. You will have three minutes. Please do not clap or make any comments, either while an individual speaks or after he or she finishes. As you came in tonight, you received a card to fill out if you indicated you wanted to speak. That card asks for your name, address, and other information. Is there anyone who wants to speak that did not fill out one of these and wants to speak? Okay. However, we will only read out your name and the town you reside in and the schools your children attend when it's your turn to speak. If you did not fill out a card but wish to speak, please hold up your hand, and someone will give you a card. We already discussed that. Anyone who is uncomfortable addressing the board in person may reach out to the board by email, telephone, or mail, and our contact information is available on the Lexington One website, and we welcome all messages. And I just would like to take the time, since we're virtual, to thank all the people that have emailed us this past weekend. I want to thank all the teachers who used their voice and spoke to us and let us know their true feelings, and we did hear from a handful of parents, but we, we heard from numerous, numerous, numerous teachers, and we welcome that you felt, that you wanted to share those messages with us. So at this time, I am going to call on Ms. Meredith Tosh Candy. She is going to discuss returning five days face-to-face. She lives in Columbia, and what, do you have a child in our district? Okay, she's a teacher. Where do you teach? Pillion High School? Well, great, welcome. We're glad to have you. So go ahead, Ms. Tosh Candy.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair, board members, and Dr. Little for allowing me to speak today. I am a teacher here in Lexington One, and I am here to advocate for our teachers and staff. I know many parents are encouraging five-day return face-to-face. I will never criticize a parent for advocating what they believe is best for their child. That is their job as parents. However, my parents can't come here today to advocate for what's best for me. I have to advocate for myself and my colleagues, or no one else will. As a teacher, I want students back five days a week more than anything. Do you realize how difficult it is to teach orchestra virtually? But science, data, and research are telling us it is not safe to do so yet, and here are three names to prove that point. Ms. Demi Bannister, Coach Charles Peterson, and Mr. Wendell Smith. These are three educators in our state, two of which are from the Midlands, that have already lost their lives to COVID while serving in their schools, and this is just from the past week alone. None of their districts are back five days face-to-face, either hybrid or one hundred percent virtual, and there have still been three deaths. Here is what Dr. Teresa Holmes, the vice chair of Richland Two School Board, said in response to the death of Ms. Bannister. How would you like it to be your family member that did not survive? I know people are wanting schools to be open. I know they're saying, oh, it's mostly survivable, but what if it was your loved one, or one of your family members, or your child? These deaths can be greatly reduced and avoided. Our current hybrid model protects the lives of faculty, staff, students, and families exponentially more than five days face-to-face when social distancing will become impossible. Our current hybrid model is working. We aren't seeing a huge spike in cases, and our students are still learning. Many of my students have expressed that they prefer the hybrid model because they are receiving more individualized instruction. This is not a race. My parents used to read Aesop's Fables to me, and one in particular comes to mind, the tortoise and the hare. Who won that race? Was it the swift hare or the patient tortoise? Slow and steady is the pace. Slow and steady wins the race. When a member of the Lexington One family dies, and I am intentionally saying when and not if, will the race to five days face-to-face have been worth it, worth the death of even one person? This is a case of prioritization. Is the greater priority being the hare and racing to face-to-face, or being the tortoise, taking things slow and steady to protect the lives, health, and well-being of our greatest resource, our faculty and staff? I please ask that you consider to retain the hybrid model for the foreseeable future, for the safety and well-being of our faculty and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tosh Candy. Okay, we are now going to go, we are now going to go to Ms. Emily Homer-
Conrad.
Conrad, I'm sorry, I can't read it. Emily Homer Conrad. She lives in what, what town?
Lexington.
Okay, she lives in Lexington, sorry. And she has children at Pleasant Hill Middle and Pleasant Hill Elementary, and she is going to be discussing five-day face-to-face. So Ms. Homer Conrad, go ahead, please.
I first want to say that it's not that I don't believe that the virus is here, it is. I have, like I said, like she said, three children. I have one child in middle school and two at the elementary school, kindergartner, and a first grader. This hybrid model has been proven before that it doesn't work, and the online model has been proven before by two thousand and eleven report done by the Center of Research and Educational Outcomes that was done in Pennsylvania charter schools, proved that the children that did online learning were very far behind those that were in-person, face-to-face. Now, I understand that there were recently teachers that had passed away, but those teachers were at schools that were online and had not gone face-to-face. I think that this virus is already predominant in our community everywhere, and yes, there are productive measures that we can take by wearing masks and such, and we have taught our children that since March when the pandemic started. But this going hybrid model leaves our children only in school two days out of a five-day week, and some weeks it's only one day, so they're not really learning, and it's shown that kindergartners and first graders can't learn by videos sent to them through PowerPoint slides. There's no way. We're going to leave a whole generation of children behind, and that generation of children is going to cause lifelong impact on not only our economy, but also on those of you that may rely on those children to help take care of our citizens. We cannot leave these children behind. If we forget them in kindergarten, first-grade years, and the elementary age years, when it's most, it's most important for them to learn the basics of reading and writing and math that they have to learn face-to-face, and you just forget about them, then we're going to have a huge community at a loss. And not only will that affect our economy, that'll affect the economy of Lexington County, because you're going to lose a lot of citizens if we don't bring it to the students back five days face-to-face, and you're also going to cause, you know, I have parents, myself, I've lost a job because I have to home teach, and, and also, you know, take care of kids now that I wasn't planning on before. The private schools are packed. We've called many parents, have tried to get our children into private schools because they're offering five-day face-to-face, but they don't have room now. And so now we're at a loss, and we're having to teach our own children, which we weren't planning on back when all this started last March. So that's one of the things that I wanted to say.
Okay, well, thank you, Ms. Homer Conrad. We appreciate you coming tonight. I'd like, like to call on Ms. Ashley Lewis. Is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Is Hutton Lane in Lexington? Ms. Lewis, is Hutton Lane in Lexington? It's in Lexington? Okay. She is, Ashley Lewis, she is coming to us from Lexington. She has children at Lexi-, Lake Murray Elementary and at Beechwood Middle, so Ms. Lewis, and she's going to be discussing five days face-to-face.
Got it. Hello. First of all, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Again, my name is Ashley Lewis. I have a daughter in elementary school and a daughter in middle school. I'm here today for, for them, to show them I will do whatever it takes to ensure their future and to demand they begin to receive the education they deserve and that we have all come to know and expect from Lexington School District One, the best district in the state. We are truly blessed to have such amazing schools and teachers in our community. With that being said, our kids need to get back to school five days a week, face-to-face. Lexington One administrators have had since March to figure out how to get students safely back in the classroom five days a week, just as other districts in our state have done and are doing, and yet here we are. Everyone is back at work. Daycare workers have been working five days a week throughout the entire pandemic, along with all essential workers. Parents have had to work five-plus days a week to pay bills and now extra childcare costs. Imagine what life must look like for single parents today. Because every day kids aren't in school, we have to pay someone to keep them. Parents have been paying and watching someone do the job schools are telling us they can't do since March. Meanwhile, our tax dollars are still going to schools, and district employees continue to receive their regular salaries for our children to receive less than half of their education in regular face-to-face instructional time. We know the numbers concerning this virus. We've all heard them. The sacrifices we're making and the repercussions this will have on our children do not reflect the risk. A quick Google search of documented transmission from student to teacher will yield little results. In the entire world, it is difficult to find a single case of this happening anywhere. That is because, and science confirms, that children are far less susceptible to this virus than adults. They are far less likely to contract and therefore far less likely to transmit COVID-19 than any other age demographic. Where is the outbreak at the daycares that have been open this whole time? Schools closed down and kids started going to daycare. As long as teachers and staff follow protocol, just as they've been doing and continue wearing their masks, along with every single student in the school, it won't be an issue, just like it hasn't been for our daycares. Lastly, I witness a lot of concern for the vulnerable and at-risk in our society, and I share those concerns with you, which is why I believe that those families with children or relatives in high-risk categories should be given the option to be one hundred percent virtual. Let people decide what is best for their families. It's either one hundred percent face-to-face or one hundred percent virtual, but one foot in the door and one foot out the door simply isn't working and cannot continue. It is not sustainable, not for the hard-working members of our community and not for our children. It is time Lexington School District One recognizes the true victims of this new normal, and they are not the teachers, not the administrators, and not the members of this board. They are our children, your students, who are active, who you are actively depriving of structured socialization growth and equality education, who miss their friends, who just want to go back to school, who say virtual learning is hard. And we won't stop fighting until they get back, because we are their parents and we know what's best for them. We will do whatever it takes to make our voices heard, even with masks on. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Okay. I'm now going to call on Caitlin Barbosa, and Caitlin is, is, I don't know what city she lives at either. None of you ladies live in a town. Lexington, she lives in Lexington. She has a child at New Providence and one at Lexington Middle School, and she wants to talk about back-to-school face-to-face. Ms. Barbosa?
So my name is Caitlin Barbosa, and I'm here today to advocate for my family being in favor of five days face-to-face. I was told that parents wanting five days face-to-face were the minority, and that we were just making our voices louder than the majority. I hope that today, even my loud voice alone matters. This is just an original post from the politicsofparenting.com, but it sums up better than anything I could have written on my own. I've talked to many, many parents from many different Facebook groups and multiple counties and districts who all feel the same way. Dear school administrators, board members, or decision-makers, it has been a couple of weeks of this virtual learning, and I'm here to tell you, it is not working, and we are not okay. I know you're doing the best you can. Most of us don't feel that you are because we don't feel heard, let alone doing the best that you can. Have you experienced virtual learning, like really sat in a home with families struggling to make this work? Have you witnessed the meltdowns of both students and parents, the fights and frustrations of not understanding the day's agenda, or math lessons, or technology failures? The onset depression kids are experiencing due to sitting all alone. Have you sat in the home of families with multiple kids only to see every child eat lunch alone, have recess alone, have snack alone? It's absolutely heartbreaking, and I feel held hostage in my own home. I cannot make my kids, who's calling me right now? I cannot make my kids, take them on a bike ride or to the park or for recess on a picnic for lunch, because every child has a unique schedule. Help me understand why all families are expected to be flexible with virtual learning, yet we cannot have a one-hour lunch break school-wide. If you have not witnessed this, then I beg you to stop telling us that you understand and start listening. Parents know what is best for our children, and we're going to fight to make things right. Children belong in school together every day. Virtual learning was supposed to be an option to families that felt unsafe reentering schools, as this can remain an option, live, in person. Education is the only option for many of us, especially those with us full-time jobs. Parents are not meant to be the teachers, social workers, and principals in our own homes. Teachers are not supposed to work twice as hard to make half the difference with the same pay. same pay. Let that sink in, because if you truly feel that children are getting the same education virtually as they would in person, you do not deserve a seat on the board and should immediately be banned from working in the school education system. Stores are open, daycares are open, restaurants are open. The fact that schools remain closed is baffling. Are you aware that preschools are open? Little boys and girls who are absolutely adorable with their Paw Patrol masks, but I ask, have you been around many three- or four-year-olds lately? Because they're the most disgusting humans out there. Their sleeves are now Kleenexes. They'll pick gum off the bottom of a picnic table and chew it and then share it with a friend. They're gross, absolutely adorable, but gross, and yet they're in school and to your surprise, doing just fine. Great, actually, preschoolers and daycare children are doing just great. If they can manage, I have faith that you would have confidence in our older children as well, because regardless of your intentions with virtual learning, it's not working. And again, we are not okay. Families are not okay. We are not okay with watching our children's education progress, regress rather than improve. We are not okay hearing our kids calling themselves stupid when they do not understand We are not okay with our children with IEPs and 504 plans like mine who are not receiving their accommodations. We're not okay with our children losing social and emotional health over fear of a virus. Have you ever tried to teach a child how to hold a pencil properly on Zoom? No, it's not working. Do you realize that students have once left school crying each morning, absolutely hating their new normal? Put your political agendas aside. Let our personal physicians decide what is best for our health while you do your job and do what is best for your district. And in those final decisions, if you're on the fence, just remember, we are not okay, teachers are not okay, Lexington District One families are not okay. We are stronger together, five-days face-to-face.
Thank you, Ms. Barbosa. Okay, I'll now call on Brittany Little, and Brittany is a resident of Lexington, and she has a child at the Pleasant Hill School, Pleasant Hill Elementary, I think. So Brittany?
Hey, how are you? Okay, I don't have a speech planned today. This is just a story. This is my story. Let me start off and say that I moved into Lexington School District One for a reason. I spent $35,000 extra on my house for a reason. It was because of the school district. That was the reason. With that being said, I agree with what y'all say that, you know, virtual does work for some, virtual does not work for all. The reason why is I'm a hairdresser. I spent $25,000 on my education to go to school. I work my butt off. I work 60 hours a week, five to six days a week, 10 to 12-hour days, eight to 10 clients a day. Don't wear a mask, although I understand the reason for the mask. With this being said, my situation is very unique because I make most of the money for my family. With this situation happening, I have a fourth grader, a kindergartner, and a one-year-old. I plan my kids out on purpose so that I would not have to pay for two kids in childcare. This is the reason why I did this. With this situation, it is forcing me to have to pay an extra $750 a month to pay for this extra child in childcare, which I am putting them through daycare because it will not work for me. The situation, thank God, my daycare does a 5K program, because if not, I would be completely, there's no way I could do it. Because with me not working those three extra days during the week, there's no way I could afford my car payment, or my house payment, or food to put on my table, or anything else. So I am working the full five days. Thankfully, my daughter, my oldest daughter, is doing the virtual days with her father who lives in Fort Mill, which is also another issue. I'm having to drive my child on Sunday afternoons to Fort Mill and back on Tuesdays. So my child is being forced out of her home, which she has not ever been like that. She's been with me for nine years, which now she is being forced to be with her father, which is great. I mean, it's not an issue, but it's just, it's a situation where it's pulling her out of the home, and it's making it very difficult for me as a mother to do all of this together. Also, I got bullet points, but not a speech. Thing that I don't understand is 100% of the parents send their kids to school every, you know, 100% of the parents that send their kids to school, they don't believe that COVID only exists on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday when they're sending their kids to school on Monday and Tuesday. It makes no sense. If you're going to send them two days, send them five days, because for the parents that can't do this, I can't afford it. I can't do this every, you know, I can't do this forever. I can't afford it. I'm pulling money out of savings left and right to be able to afford to put this kid in daycare. I feel like if you want to stay virtual, stay virtual. It works out. You know, you've got teachers that you're paying to do virtual, you do virtual, and then other students, you know, you go to school five days. It doesn't make sense to me. Also, with this being said, my fourth grader started a new school this year. She has come home crying because she cannot make friends because she is six-foot distancing between all of her classmates. She cannot talk to people. She can't socialize. She can't do anything because she's stuck six feet distancing with a mask on. It's making it very impossible for me as a mother to handle all of this as well as work and do everything together. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Okay, I'm going to call on Alexis Skabinski. I think she is a repeat. We've had her before. And she lives, let's see, you live in Lexington, right?
Yes.
And she has a fifth grader and a first grader at New Providence. So Ms. Skabinski?
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me once again. I was here last month advocating for my son, both my children, who both have IEPs, and I'm here again to advocate that, or to say that a lot of my fears have come to fruition. This hybrid schedule is not working. It's not working for my special education children, and it's not working for us as a family unit. I'm a single mom. I work full-time, and I go to school full-time, and I can't drop out of school because I'm utilizing VA benefits to close the gap that I have with our bills. So I go to school full-time, I'm a mom full-time, a single mom full-time, and, excuse me, I'm working twice as hard to educate my children, something that this district should be responsible for. I got to my kid's daycare today, and my son had none of his assignments done, and I didn't know who to take that frustration out on, and I unfortunately took it out on my six-year-old. Why didn't you do your homework? But that's not his fault. It's not the daycare's fault. The daycare is not being paid to be a teacher. For the most part, high school seniors or college students, they're not teachers, but we're expecting them to do the job of a teacher without the pay. And now I get to go home at 9:30 at night stressing, is my son going to be marked absent for today because we didn't have his assignments done? And as a first grader, we have an assignment for 17 minutes of writing. I mean, to me, that seems completely unrealistic, but I'm not a teacher. Our first graders really sitting in front, in a classroom, writing for 17 minutes? My son can't even read a book. That's what his IEP is for, is for reading intervention. So I'm at a loss as to what to do, and I'm really frustrated. My children need to be back in school a full five days, period. This two-days-a-week schedule is not working, and my children have been in daycare since June. Our daycares had one COVID-19 case. We shut down, and not a single other teacher or child tested positive for the virus, and everybody had to be tested before returning back to daycare. So I haven't found a single case in any state in the country in which there was a daycare outbreak. If daycares are able to manage to stay open, I don't understand why Lexington One can't figure it out. I understand the complications with the middle and a high school, but an elementary school with 20 kids in a classroom, when their daycare has 40, there's no reason it shouldn't work out. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit off today. I'm just, I'm tired. I average four hours of sleep right now between my schoolwork, my children's schoolwork, and stress. You're really affecting this. I need my kids back in school.
Thank you, Ms. Skabinski. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on, is it Karis Pugh? Karis, is that the name? Okay, Karis Pugh. She lives in Lexington, and she has, whoa, you've got all kinds here. You've got a first, a third, and there's maybe twins.
Two fourth graders, yes.
Been fourth grade at Pleasant Hill Elementary.
Yes.
And you want to talk about the challenges of hybrid learning. So go ahead, Ms. Pugh.
All right. I just want to start off by saying I appreciate you guys. I know that you have worked nonstop since this started, and I do appreciate it. Listening to this whole meeting, I would say that you've got a great plan in place. I really do. But I would like you, I would like to invite you guys to my house on a virtual learning day so you can see that plan in process. I have four children in the virtual learning plan, one school-issued device. Even though I said I needed four, we have one. There's a waitlist, I understand that. But there's security protocols on that child's device that I can't access. I can't email him his slideshow to use his device because of the security protocols. He doesn't have his work assigned on that device because the other kids in his class don't have devices. So that device that the school has given me to help is useless. I've always encouraged my kids not to use tablets, but here, here's a Kindle that I bought in 2014. Guess we're going to do school on it. I don't have a wireless that is strong enough to do four kids on four devices at the same time. I work 50 hours a week. My spouse now works two days a week so that he can help me homeschool the kids. We've got two parents all day long on our virtual days working with four kids on four different devices that may or may not work. If we get it working, the slideshow won't load. Or there's a Seesaw app that tells me my kid has an assignment on there, so I have to log on to the Seesaw app, which shows there isn't an assignment. So I have to email the teacher, who after three days has not emailed me back. Is he going to get marked absent on those assignments? This is just one kid. The videos won't load sometimes. Sometimes they'll send us to a password-protected site without the password, so you email the teacher and ask her the password, and she tells me to restart my device. How does that help with a password-protected device? I'm a nurse. I've been working with COVID since day one in the ICU. I was scared. I get it. I know you guys are scared too, but we have got to go back. You guys are essential, more so than I am, in education. That's all.
Thank you, Ms. Pugh. Okay, at this time, I'm going to call on Robert Christopher Rice. He wants to talk about reentry, and he lives in Lexington, and he is a child at Gilbert High School. Mr. Rice?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board, and district staff for just giving me the opportunity to speak before you. We are all in unprecedented times, and I think we've heard from tonight that we're all suffering. Everybody is suffering in some type of way, and so I want to be one of the first people to just thank everybody who's been involved with this effort ever since March, whether it's the Board, the district staff, the school staff, the teachers, for your hard work and your time and your effort that you put in. I don't think that should be taken lightly, because even though you've put in all that hard work, you're suffering also, but you're still putting in that hard work. But what I do want to do is I want to urge the Board and also the district to continue to consider the feedback that you're getting, like you're hearing tonight, like you're getting from emails. Consider the feedback from the parents, the teachers, and the community leaders, whether it's face-to-face or whether it's hybrid, and do your best to be objective and not just decide based on how you feel is one way or the other. There are always two sides to a coin, and I think we have to make sure we're looking at both sides and trying to make the best objective decision that we can. Also, I recommend that we take advantage of the learnings that maybe some of the other school districts that started face-to-face. I know Batesburg-Leesville has K through five going face-to-face now, so maybe we can glean some information from them in terms of how's that working for them. I guess of all things that I would say, I want to encourage the district not to make decisions in a vacuum. One of the worst things we can do right now is make a decision in a vacuum without the input and without the feedback. So I know it's a tough decision. I know y'all have tough decisions. I mean, it's what I call a third, a third, a third. No matter what decision you make, a third will be in favor, a third will be against it, and a third will be somewhere in the middle, and they may sway from one side to the other. But I think we just need to have grace towards each other. We need to communicate with each other and not make those decisions in a vacuum. I advise the district, I know this is kind of more of a district decision, but district, please listen to your board members. Your board members are being bombarded with emails and phone calls and Facebook messages and everything, so they're basically getting grassroots information from the field. So board members, please speak up and tell the district what you're hearing. And I think what we've got to do is have the board and the district partner together and make the best decision. And my last and final point is, whatever we're deciding, whatever we're discussing, the data we're looking at, everything we're talking about as a district, as a board, communicate, communicate, communicate. If there's one thing you can do during these uncertain times where everybody is suffering, the best thing you can do is over-communicate. Communicate so people know what's going on, what's being considered, and what are the thoughts that are going into the decisions before the decisions are made. So communicate, communicate, communicate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? You're welcome to stay, but if you want to leave, you're welcome to leave. We probably have a good bit left, but if you want to step out, that's fine. We don't mind at all, and we really thank all of you for coming and sharing with us tonight. We appreciate hearing from everybody. Thank you. At this time, we're going to move, we're going to go back to 8.0, which is reports and action items from executive session. Do I hear a motion to approve six certified recommendations for the 2020-2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accept the six certified recommendations as recommended by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020-2021 academic school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. Do I hear a motion to approve one administrative recommendation for the 2020-2021 school year?
Madam Chair, I move the Board accept the one administrative recommendation by Dr. Little and the senior leadership team for the 2020-2021 academic school year.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Powers. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Are there any questions or comments, Board? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and once again, it's unanimous. We now are going to talk about a property contractual matter related to a bus transportation facility. Do I hear a motion that the Board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per an agreement dated February 19, 2020 with Royal Properties LLC and Royal Holdings One LLC?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board accept the administration's recommendation to approve the purchase of two pieces of property per an agreement dated February 19, 2020 with Royalty Properties LLC and Royalty Holdings One LLC. The properties are known by Lexington County as TMS number 00549807015 and TMS number 00549807014. The consideration for this property is $1,500,160. This total equates to $32,000 per acre.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Oswald. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Green. Okay, we now have a motion and a second on the floor, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters. He'll walk us through this property purchase, and then we'll open it up for questions and discussion. Mr. Salters?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. I'm just going to give you a brief highlight of the property. As you recall, in the 2018 bond referendum, one of the duties we were tasked to complete was to relocate our bus transportation facility, the Lexington Hub. And so some considerations when doing that, we're looking for a piece of property to be able to do that. We're looking for a central location to be able to consolidate Lexington and Riverbluff and White Nile service areas into one service area to get some economies of scale. Currently, the White Nile buses run off of the White Nile High School property, which is obviously very busy, and we certainly can use the space at White Nile High School as we continue to expand that facility with 32 classroom addition and a performing arts center as well. The property consideration with this particular piece of land, it's roughly 4.1 miles from White Nile High School, 6.9 from Lexington, and 8.7 from Riverbluff. Ideally, we would look for an industrial area which this property is located in. That's primarily because our buses and the disturbance that they potentially cause early It's primarily because our buses and the disturbance that they potentially cause early in the mornings with startup, sometimes as early as 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning. And obviously, we want good site distances for our employees and buses to have safe access to our facility. And just a quick rundown, we have 190 state buses currently in the District. We've actually, over the last two years, including this year, will have received 11 new buses from the state. 10 of those buses will be located or operate out of this proposed lot. So that's 152 buses. And then we have 21, back in, if you go back to 2016, we had 21 district-owned buses, activity buses we use for field trips, ballgames, that kind of thing. And we have increased that number to 49. That number had been 21 for a number of years. And as our schools grew, even when we opened River Bluff High School and kept bringing on middle schools, we didn't keep up with the number of field trips and activity, sports activities that were going on. So we focused on that over the last few years. That number's at 49. So we anticipate a total of approximately 196 buses will operate out of this lot. And of course, the associated employees will park at this lot as well. So it's, you know, close to 400 vehicles on this lot at one time. This is our current facility. You've got Highway One up here, and Bar Road runs this way. And we are co-located with the Lexington area maintenance, bus maintenance facility. And this is a zoomed-in view of that facility. This is the Lexington-only buses. So the White Nile buses are a similar size and group. And so this area down at the bottom here is the Lexington group, and then this is the state maintenance operation. And so we run basically out of three portable classrooms that are circa 1980s, some maybe even the 70s, and are not adequate for the resources that we need to use there. Looking at the piece of property that we're proposing, this is obviously I-20, you can see here. So this is, you know, South Lake Drive. We've got Two Notch Road that runs here. Michelin would be back in this area back here. And so we have access, you know, across Two Notch, back over to the Lexington attendance area. We've had access over to the River Bluff attendance area, either via the interstate or several of these back road connectors here. And obviously, the White Nile community right here on South Lake. And the property is adjacent to, this is the Bentley Pond Toons. There's a large joint municipal water tower. It's actually right underneath that arrow. Here's a zoomed-in view of that property. The first track is this little area right here, which provides us an ingress to the property with good sight lines and visibility. And then we have two other egress points. It's actually a little skewed. That line should be, you know, more straight there. And so that will be a future access point. We're proposing to use this as our egress point for, for the traffic. And you see the topography, so the property generally slopes from right to left on this, on this view, and feeds down into a draw here, wetland area, which is delineated here. Approximately two and a half acres of wetland that we will not disturb as part of the development of this, this proposed building and parking areas. This is a rendering, kind of a 3D modeling of the facility and the driveway access to it. Again, the main entrance would be here, employee out in the front of the facility. Our buses would have the opportunity to drive to the rear of the facility. We will have some fueling stations. We do have some propane buses, and we also obviously have diesel buses. And they will have fueling stations along in this area, covered fueling stations. And the parking lot is designed so that they can, you know, make their way to the back and then easily feed into these parking bays. And then an exit bay here. All of this asphalt will be heavy-duty asphalt, which is required for our buses to maintain integrity of that surface with the frequent driving and turning that'll occur. And then the building itself will be more centrally located here. And this is a shot of the, the front elevation of the building. Very similar in layout to our current operations building. We kind of modeled it after that. And we have office spaces in the, in the front of the building, and then in the rear of the building. Operations, we have a large warehouse. In this scenario, we have mechanic bays and wash bays for our, our drivers to maintain our bus fleet. This is a schematic layout of the proposed office areas here in the, in the front. We've got some flex space here in the middle, much like we do at our operations facility. A training, staff development space here, seating for about 100, 100 people. We're proposing four mechanic bays and then four wash-down bays. And these are, these will be covered bays. This is just a rendering of what the staff development room might look like from a, you know, 3D modeling perspective. There's a conference room in the front, and you can see the flex space kind of opened up in the back there. And this is that flex space, what it could potentially look like, all the way down to the Lexington One mission statement on the wall. And then just, just to recap again, this is, this is the location of the property. And, you know, I would just remind you that, you know, our process is, you give us, you know, through a formal action, you give us the authority to go seek out property, which you did. Then you enter into an option agreement, which you did. And you then authorize us to get appraisals on a piece of property. And we have 90 days to ratify a price on that property, which we did. And that's where the $32,000 an acre came from, based on two independent appraisals. And this would be the final vote that you would take to move to close the property, and we'd actually move about purchasing it. And should you take that, that vote this evening, we will close the property as quickly as possible and start the process of permitting with the county and get a land disturbance permit as quickly as we can and go ahead and get construction underway with the goal of being open for next school year, operating off of this, this facility. Happy to answer any questions that you may have related to it.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Salters?
I have some discussion. First off, thank you all for getting us the due diligence on Friday. I appreciate not getting that the night of the meeting. With that being said, I have read every single page inside of this binder. There are a couple of items I'd like to point out to the Board. Originally, we were told we needed between 15 and 20 acres. The District brought us one parcel of land for 44 acres and an additional parcel for 2.61 acres. Nothing has changed. We still only need between 15 and 20 acres. As a matter of fact, the site layout shows us that less than half of this land will be used. The property listing says it can be subdivided, but yet we aren't. As for the 2.61 acres, page after page in this binder talks about recognized environmental conditions. So much potential contamination existed that additional assessment of the site was warranted. There's documented contamination on adjoining property, and the surrounding property has land use restrictions consisting of no residential use, no groundwater use, no agricultural use, no childcare or elderly care facilities, and no school use. All of that information was in a report dated July the 8th. A few weeks later, in a report dated August the 20th, after additional assessment of the property was done by the same agency, they revealed that surprisingly, there was no evidence of USTs, underground storage tanks, septic tanks, or water supply wells. But a few weeks earlier, they, and I'm quoting here, "We observed multiple water supply wells on the subject property. We observed two vent pipes likely associated with former underground storage tanks that were utilized at the Kaiser Grocery Business." And according to the property owner, a septic system is present on the subject site, although they could not locate the septic system. The original report also included pictures of the vent pipes, one water supply well, and a view of the septic connection. Why are we, as a Board, spending all of this money on a site that only serves as a driveway? I know we were told DOT said we needed it, but DOT also said that we had to have two entrances for the land on Old Cherokee for Lexington Middle School. But when that wasn't possible because one parcel of land fell through, we made it work with one entrance. Even so, when a price couldn't be negotiated, the District went back and asked the landowner to purchase just enough land for a driveway. There's no reason why that can't be done here as well. But if y'all are just insistent on buying additional land for a driveway, there's a lot for sale right next to the driveway in the layout. And that landowner, from what we discussed earlier, has not been contacted, and that land has not been discussed. So if that isn't enough to convince you that we don't need the additional 2.61 acres, in addition to documented environmental hazards, we can add demolition and cleanup fees because there are abandoned homes and hazardous substances on site. And oh, let's not forget, a business and a home. We would be bulldozing someone's livelihood and someone else's home. I just want to say this, this land is not included in bond referendum money. Every yes vote on this board tonight is taking something away from someone. I do not understand why we keep buying land that we do not need and overpaying for land. So with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to divide the question and vote on each piece of property separately.
Okay, we have a motion from Ms. Garrus to divide the two pieces of property into two votes. Does Ms. Garrus have a second? Okay, the motion fails. Are there any other questions or comments, Board? I have a couple of questions. Mr. Salters, tell us how did you find this land? Because I don't remember.
Madam Chair, we did an extensive search of the area in which we reviewed multiple tracts of land with the Board. I'm not gonna identify them right now, but we viewed tracts of land across I-20, closer to the Lexington area. We reviewed tracts of land down South Lake Drive. And we reviewed this tract of land and other tracts of land on Two Notch Road. This tract of land actually had a for-sale sign on it, and that's how it came to my attention. After, you know, I study the Lexington County GIS and, you know, identify potential properties. Then we go out and ride and look at the properties. And as I rode by this site, there was a for-sale sign on the property.
Okay, thank you. And since Ms. Garrus did bring up the question about the DOT requirements for two driveways, can you walk us through that?
We, we did a site assessment and traffic study, traffic impact study with SCDOT and our civil engineer. And the layout that was presented, I'll just go back to this layout right here. This layout is, is the agreed-upon layout that was the most cost-effective and safe layout determined by DOT in cooperation with our civil engineer. And I did want to make one point of clarification. The Lexington Middle School site actually does have two entrances to that site. Ms. Garrus said there was one entrance. We were actually trying to get a third entrance to that campus, just as a point of clarification.
Any other questions, Board?
Yes, so, thank you. So we were told that we had to buy the second piece of property for LMS for an additional entrance, I guess I should say. But come to find out, they were saying we needed one on a back road Cherokee Trail, that they couldn't all be on Old Cherokee, but we found out that wasn't true. So I'm just not buying it, that we need this additional property here. And when he mentioned the most cost-effective, well, here's what the Board needs. The Board needs all of these options in front of us. Then we decide what's cost-effective and what's work and what works, and we have figures in front of us instead of, here's our one option, here's what's gonna work. We were presented with one piece of land, and there were others discussed. But when we came back months ago, and I even took notes back then, one hadn't came up for sale, there was never contact made with the landowner, we didn't get anywhere with negotiations. So at the end of the day, we had one piece of property brought to us. We have one site design, and we're being told that DOT says this is all that can work. Like I said, I'm just not buying it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Garrus. Is there anything else, Board? I just also want to say this summer, I had, I had the opportunity to ride the buses and deliver food. And every bus driver that I rode with is so excited about this. This is such a feather in their cap because where they are now, we have that huge drainage issue. I think they have to walk through so much water, and I think they even have to reposition the buses, you said, when we were having a big rainstorm because the drainage is so poor on that land. And they were all very excited about this. Ms. Green?
Well, I, I can just kind of emphasize what Mr. Salters said about the property on Bar Road and those portables that they've been using as offices. I mean, I was a student at Lexington High School in the mid-'80s, and those, I mean, that's like a landmark out there that, and they've not moved or changed or improved in appearance in 35 years. And so I think that an updated, adequate transportation facility is long overdue for what has tripled in attendance size. And so I appreciate the efforts that you've gone to to find. I was out at this property on Friday, and I think it's supremely suitable for what we were looking for. So thank you.
And the other thing is, how long do you perceive, or what do you think, how long will we use this site? Because based on Pelear, former high school, now Pelear Middle, Gilbert High School, which now is, was Gilbert Elementary, how long have we used those pieces of property? And I'll be honest, I foresee this one being exactly just like that.
So a site like this, it will, will position this District for 50-plus years because there is growth potential on this site. So when we add another 20 buses to this campus, we're not pigeonholed because we don't have enough land to add more parking for the buses or more parking for the employees. And that's the intent of being able to grow the campus as it stands. So this really will position us for, you know, the District for 50 years. I mean, and, and, you know, we can expand the building. We can add more parking, more wash bays, more mechanic bays off the back of the building. So there's a lot of flexibility we have on this campus. Additionally, you know, much like we did with the New Providence land, where the District bought, you know, a parcel of land, and then at some point recognized that they were not gonna use that land, they carved it off and sold the land. If at some point down the road, the District decides, you know what, we're never gonna grow any bigger, or we don't need this for, to relocate a maintenance facility or some other facility, it can be subdivided and, and used for another purpose and sold. I did want to point out that in the due diligence process, we do a Phase 1 environmental study. And if there's, if there's nothing in the area identified, you don't move to Phase 2. In this case, there were several suspect items. Vent pipes are a typical trigger that shows that you might have an underground storage tank. And so you move to, we move to a Phase 2 environmental study to do due diligence, to make sure that things, that hazards that were affecting this development would not impact us. And we got a clear, a clear letter from our environmental consultant stating that, that this facility and this site is safe to develop on, and is not gonna be a problem. And so that's that process and how that works.
Thank you, Ms. Green.
Mr. Salters, you said something when you were talking about the longevity of this piece that I had not really even thought about. But, you know, five years ago, we didn't know that we were going to need a propane filling station at our bus facility.
Correct.
And we don't know if five, 10, 20 years from now, what sort of fuel sources our buses are going to be using. And I think having some flexibilities and some space to grow and, and adapt that property is not a bad thing because I felt, you know, it just seems like we're, new technology is, is, you know, growing exponentially. And I think that includes, I mean, diesel's been around a long time. And so I just think that there's some potential for some big changes in how our buses are fueled. And so I think that this is not a bad thing to have some extra space.
Well, and I've been on employee relation kicks tonight, whether it's Ms. Gaskins or Mr. Robertson. But I do think when you build a facility that demonstrates respect for that profession. And I think just two years ago, we were in this room talking about where are we gonna find bus drivers? And we had to start a school year without, quite frankly enough, bus drivers. But y'all did a great job and did the work to hire them. So I do think from an employee retention, as well as professional development, this demonstrates our commitment to our bus drivers. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, a couple of things I'd like to respond to that. Mr. Salters mentioned that we bought more land than needed at New Providence. Mr. Salters mentioned that we bought more land than needed at New Providence than we sold it. If I recall, we paid 50, over $50,000 an acre for that land, and we sold it to Mungo for 30-something thousand dollars an acre. And in Phase 2, he said we got site clearance. Well, like I mentioned, I mean, they gave us so much site clearance from Phase 1 to Phase 2 that the pictures they had of septic tanks, water supply wells in Phase 2, they said that they couldn't find any of that. So how do things just disappear? I mean, there's no evidence of them, but yet there were pictures there in Phase 1. And y'all say this is going to last 50-plus years, and you can add on to it. Well, if our buildings are maintained, this might just last us 50 years. But as we've seen, we're tearing down, you know, parts of Gilbert Elementary School now, parts of Pelear Middle School.
That were built when Truman and Eisenhower were president.
If they were maintained, they'd still be here for another 50 years. But we need to put maintenance staff in our budget. I mean, these buildings have to be maintained. And, I mean, I'm glad the bus drivers are getting new billing. I'm sure they're happy, too. As far as professional development and how this makes them feel, imagine how they felt for the last 40 years that they've stood knee-deep in mud to get on their bus when they were parked down at the end of the bus lot. I mean, these are things that should have been taken care of years ago, and I'm glad it's happening, but it's happening all over the district. I mean, there are needs that still aren't being attended to.
Thank you, Ms. Garris. Anything else, Board? Any other comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor from Mr. Oswald. We have a second from Ms. Green. All in favor of the property contractual matter related to the bus transportation facility purchasing two parcels of land from Royal Properties LLC and Royal Holdings One LLC. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, so we have four in favor and two opposed, and the motion carries. And start building, Mr. Salters?
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to go to 10.0, which are action items. We are now going to 10.1, which is second reading from Title IX policy. Do I hear a motion for the Board to approve Policy AXX Title IX, which provides a structured grievance process for sexual harassment as outlined in and required by new federal regulations accompanying Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972?
Madam Chair, attached, please find Policy AXX Title IX for second reading and adoption. I move that the Board approve Policy AXX Title IX. This is a new standalone Title IX policy which provides a structured grievance process for sexual harassment as outlined in and required by new federal regulations accompanying Title IX of the Education Amendments Act of 1972.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Guyton. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Powers. We now have a motion and a second on the floor. And Mr. Stacy, you want to walk us through this one, please?
Okay, so basically, y'all received this in first reading last month, and we're just asking for it to be adopted. I've shared this with attorney firms. The policy was developed using a blend of language in the South Carolina School Board Association's model policy, and a draft policy was presented to the law firm of Halligan, Mahoney, and Williams, and it's been edited for our purposes. And we have already started, this all went into effect August 15th or 14th, and we've already started the process of training. As you read through the policy, you'll note that there has to be training provided for coordinators, investigators, decision-makers, informal resolution facilitators, and appeal decision-makers. And so we have worked through, we've begun that process now. We've had over 150 people participate in an overview for what this represents and how this works. On Thursday, September 10th, we had seven people participate in a coordinator training. We had, Monday, yesterday, we had over 40 people participate in an informal resolution facilitator training. We have the investigator training for tomorrow, and we'll do the decision-making training on Friday, September 18th. And so we feel pretty good about the progress that we've made towards implementation of this process, and if it's adopted tonight, then we will move forward. We're getting the information on our website, which is a part of the law, and identify the coordinators and have that information available to the public.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stacy. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Stacy?
Just one question. How much does our proposed policy differ from the model policy after it went through the attorneys? I mean, was there anything of huge substance, or was it more nuanced?
It was pretty much what we did with Meredith, and Meredith can answer this probably better than I can, but she took the policy that the School Boards Association presented. She took the policy Halligan and Mahoney and Williams had presented a policy for the districts that they serve. She put those two together. She had already started working on writing a policy, and literally, and I will say that when she shared it with Alan Smith, our attorney, he goes, "Man, this is really good. I'll probably take some of this." So I feel like it really does reflect what we want to do. And does that answer the question?
Yeah, so I take it it's a blend of the two things. I mean, it wasn't changing a heretofore and a therefore and all those things. It was, there was actually some substance in there.
The school board's model policy is not a standalone. The school board's policy is not a standalone policy that addresses just Title IX. They took the existing sexual harassment policies for students and for staff and added to those. So that's where the difference comes in on the model policy. There's, wumps all sexual harassment together, whether it's Title IX or not sexual harassment that doesn't rise to the level of Title IX. They put that all in one policy. We have separated it out.
Got you, got you. Thank you.
Any other questions, Board? Okay, this is an action item. We'll take a vote. All in favor of the second reading of the Title IX policy as presented by Mr. Stacy, our Chief Human Resources Officer, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and it is unanimous. We now go to 11.0, which is a superintendent's report, and I want to turn it over to Dr. Little. And Board, this is for information only.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's, I really am excited to have Mr. Gallagher here tonight. Before we get to him, I just want to remind you that this week, we are gathering lots of feedback. We've sent out two surveys, one to parents, one to staff. We have had a support staff advisory committee on Friday. We took feedback from them. We did our parent advisory council last night, and that was the first time we had done a focus group via Zoom. That was very interesting. Thank you to Ms. Halliday for arranging that. And tomorrow, we are going to do principals and teachers. We're going to bring all that data together at the end of the week, and we'll have a presentation for you next week about reentry version 2.0 and have some discussion about that. We are going to meet next Tuesday night, September 22nd. So be prepared for that, and that's really going to be the rest of our week. And you saw tonight a number of impassioned pleas about how we need to move forward in both directions, about should we move forward and stay in the hybrid model? Should we move forward and add days to the face-to-face and how that should look? So we're going to be discussing that and be talking to the Board next week. So continue to provide feedback. I know we're getting lots of emails about that, and that is a really great thing to have people give their opinion about what's coming up. So beyond that, now I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gallagher, or actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Salters and have him introduce our special guest because we have tremendous news tonight, and this is going to be really exciting. And I just want, I don't want to step on the news, but Mr. Gallagher, we're so thankful for your hard-working effort on our behalf and in terms of helping us manage funds at a very high level. So, Mr. Salters?
I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this tonight, and also, you know, want to thank Mr. Gallagher for toughening it out and being here at 5:00 after 10:00 on a Tuesday night to deliver this report to you guys. We have, you authorized us to do a bond, through a bond resolution, to do a bond sale recently, and we felt like the outcome of that sale and the timing of everything that was involved warranted an update to the Board and to the public about where we stand. So, Mr. Gallagher, I'm going to turn it over to you. I actually do have the clicker, and I can drive? Okay.
You can drive.
All right, and Board, I know there was a copy or two left in the boardroom, but I have a copy of Mr. Gallagher's presentation if.
Madam Chair, ladies and gentlemen, Board, Dr. Little, it's a pleasure to be here with you. I was here with you about a year ago, and we went over the results from your first sale of your referendum program from 2018. If we look at the page 2 of the handout, we received five bids when we sold these bonds two weeks ago. Citigroup Capital Markets came in with the lowest rate of a 1.933. 1.933 to borrow money for 25 years. That is amazingly cheap. Some key points there, we closed on the issue this morning, so the money's in the bank over at the county treasurer's office for you. It's 25 years. One of the things is the net re-offering premium yielded an additional just under $6.5 million. The project fund deposit was $161 million, broken down to $155,980 for your referendum because you needed to make your installment purchase revenue bond payments. We added that into this as well, and we added your annual capital maintenance to save you in cost of issuance. So all that was done and combined into this bond issue. So you'll have $5,250,000 going into what's known as your 8% money for capital projects. Next page. The only thing I really want to highlight here, the district enjoys a AA2 rating from Moody's or a double A rating from Standard and Poor's. Exceptionally high credit, which is a result of why you received the strong bids that you did for your bond issue. Part of that goes back to the very conservative fiscal measures, maintaining an adequate general fund, budgets within your means. Those things all factor into these credit ratings, not to mention a great community with very good economy. That helps out a lot. Okay, the thing that's really probably the most exciting about all of this is, we've been at 90 mils last year, we're going to be at 90 this year. You've got the ability to, within your program, drop down to 87.6 or roughly 88 mils going forward. Key components in that, we still have room for this next $50 million to be issued, which would be done next year. And you've also got money that's factored in for annual capital maintenance. And so you can make those decisions, whether you want to be below. But the thing that's most exciting is, we're going to be substantially below the target, and that original target, and when you went out and had your referendum, that number was 99 mils. Y'all were going to go up about 15 mils. So it's pretty exciting to see that we were able to do that. If we flip over to the next page.
And just before you turn, I just wanted to point out that this year, we were supposed to go in the schedule to 95 mils. And so not only were we not going to 95, we were able to stay at 90. So, and of course, then the next year, we would have jumped to 99. So that's really exciting to not have to do that.
And remind us again, the cost of a mil to the taxpayer?
$4, $4 per mil on an owner-occupied home, $6 on a car.
Per 100,000, right?
Per 100,000.
Yes.
Okay. If we look over the next page, last year, we locked in $165 million at 2.519. I thought that was incredibly low. This year, we come in at a 1.93. You know, a couple of things that factored into how this whole program is being able to be brought in at 10 mils below, you authorized a couple of refundings. Each of those refundings shaved a mil off each. So we did a refunding in 19 and a refunding in 20. And one of the other factors that's come in is the assessment growth. We were very, very conservative in our model. We didn't want to get out there and worry about if the growth doesn't materialize, then we got to raise mils above that. So we were very, very conservative. Assessment numbers that came in this year came in very, very strong. We still left a little bit of what we call a COVID buffer this year. That way, if collections do not materialize like we think, like they are supposed to later this year, we've got a little bit of room that we're able to not have an issue next year. The remaining piece of the referendum, like I said, we've got $50 million left, and that would be anticipated to be issued next year about this time.
Can you remind me of the relationship between interest rate and bond? I mean, typically, the rule of thumb is, when interest rate in a rising interest rate environment, bonds are good, and a stable interest rate are falling, the bond rate goes down, which is, of course, in our favor, you know, that the bond rate goes down. Does that, is that typically hold true for this?
Everything's out the window right now.
Got you.
Everything's out the window as far as that's concerned.
So there is no correlation that we can tell?
Usually, bad news means yields on bonds drop is to your benefit, but right now, rates are so, so low and so compressed because of everything that has happened this past year.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Looking at your debt structure, wanted to highlight one thing. If you look in column K, annual maintenance bonds, we do have $5,250,000 budgeted each year for annual maintenance. That way, you can plan your projects if there are other things that you want and things that you need that are outside of your referendum program. You do have a recurring source of funds for those, also can fund technology purchases and things of those sorts.
And that's backed into the slide 2 before, this graph for the project.
Yes, sir. That is already included, or if you want to say baked in there, the yellow at the top.
And that keeps it below the 8%, right? Because we've got to keep those.
That's well within your 8% debt limit.
Right, okay.
And as you recall, some of you who've been on the Board a while may recall that we've never really had that, and that's why we've had to go referendum to referendum. And so one of the goals in the '18 program was to establish that funding stream so that we can do the annual maintenance like Ms. Garris referred to earlier on, on buildings, and not have to wait for a large referendum to make things like that happen. So that's the goal of that funding stream. And of course, the initial usage of some of that funding is to maintain our technology infrastructure and also the original $393 million program. We backed out a number of HVAC projects and things like that to get down to 365, and we kind of rolled those into this funding stream to be able to accomplish those things outside of a referendum. So it gives you the ability to do those things along and along.
And to maintain our technology platform.
And to maintain the technology platform.
So I mean.
Well, you can see how important that is now.
Yeah, and I remember, it was probably Dr. Woodward's evaluation, that was some of the feedback we gave, was that we need a sustainable capital funding model for the technology platform that we'd rolled out. It's, this is good.
And you're going to have other questions, but one thing that I want Mike just to say one more time is, Mike, can you address the bond premium that we've achieved over these two sales? That number was some $22 million, I think we talked about between the two.
Yeah, we got about $6.5 million from this issue, and I think we were around $17 million on the last issue. So that is additional monies that went into your project fund.
And I had to ask the O because I had to sign all this, you know, about a week, two weeks ago. And again, that's the premium that the issuer provided us when the bonds were issued because they in turn sell them to other investors, right? Or how would you explain that in layman's terms?
In simple terms, it's this. It's the difference between the coupon and the yield. The purchasers of the bonds want a set interest rate, and it may be 5% typically out to the call date, and then from the call date on, it was like twos and threes. The fact of the matter is, is the yield in the first year was probably about 17 basis points. So they're willing to give you prepaid interest. I'm going to pay you money today, so you will pay me 5% down the road.
So is it an arbitrage, basically?
No.
It's not an arbitrage?
No, sir. It's prepaid interest.
Okay.
All right. So it's additional funds available to the program?
I'm going to, I'm not business-minded. I've never taken a business course in my whole life, other than one economics class in college. But I'm going to try to connect the dots. So, excuse, I'm going to make this very simple. So because our district has sound fiscal management, and we maintain a fund balance So because our district has sound fiscal management, and we maintain a fund balance that not only is healthy and appropriate, but it's stable. We don't take in and out of it. We, we maintain the fund balance. That in turn gives us a very solid credit rating, so that when we go to the market, our, our money makes us money, basically.
It, it saves you money.
It saves us money. Okay. Thank you.
And we go through a ratings process with these rating agencies and do interviews, and they evaluate our financials and our, our fiscal practices, and, and, I mean, that happens every time, and we sit on these ratings calls, and the most recent ones have all been around our response to COVID and how we've handled COVID and, and, and what the impact of COVID has been to our district. That's been their most important discussion point. And, and again, each time we've had these calls, they've been, well, obviously, the ratings show it, they've been very pleased with our financial strategies and, and practices to, to make it through this stuff.
But you have, I mean, when, when you have something fantastic, like what Mike has told us about, you, you have to go back four or five steps in our financial management process to, to yield that benefit, because it really, I mean, we, we have conversations all the time about our fund balance and the importance of it, and how important it is to keep it stable. And I think this is very good evidence of why those conversations are important and why that fund balance is just critical for the financial health of not only our district, but our community, because, I mean, we've saved money.
Lots of money.
Lots of money. Lots of money.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Gallagher. We appreciate you driving up from Charleston to give us that wonderful news. That's great news. Okay, at this time, are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Gallagher before he heads down 26?
Yes, I have a question. I just want to say, this speaks volumes to our finance department as well, and the work y'all have done. This is great. Thank you so much. Mr. Gallagher, this, I may have addressed this even further down, but since you're here, and we just, Mr. Salters just mentioned technology infrastructure. During a conference last week, they talked about acquisition use and security agreements as a way to fund a technology refresh. Is that anything we use?
No, ma'am. It's not something this district has used. I can't even remember the last time if any equipment was leased.
We, I'd have to go back and look at the specific year, but we, we did lease, guys, it was when we first started rolling out devices early on. And, and the issue that, that happened is, those lease payments had to come out of general fund, and the pressure on the general fund to use other operating expenses like teacher salaries squeezed that payment stream, the priority for that out, and pushed it over to the capital side. But it's been a number of years ago since we've done something like that.
Okay. Is that something worth looking into for the future?
I think, can I say something? Because it's kind of my history. When we first started buying devices, they were so expensive, and they have come down so dramatically. A Chromebook, I mean, it just doesn't compare to what we initially purchased when we first started doing all that. So I'm not sure you want to lease something that.
Well, that, that is true. I mean, some of the devices that we're buying now, the residual value of them is not what they, they used to be. I mean, we were paying, you know, $1,000, $1,200 for a device, you know, 15 years ago, and now we're paying $300 for a Chromebook. So that is, that is a valid point. It, it is still a way to, you know, to stretch your dollars, but you have to be, as I said, careful about how you make those payments, because it does impact your general fund, which typically is more stressed, I guess.
Well, and the other issue is, who, who's the tax basis? So again, the general fund operation comes, it's either the legislature or businesses. And we raise millage on businesses. For capital, that's owner-occupied houses, where most, obviously, our kids are coming from generally, in their property.
And business.
Yeah, and businesses. But we, we pull the houses into it. So again, to me, a, a device is supposed to be used more than a year, so by default, it's capital, and the very tax base that benefits from it is paying for it. So to me, it makes sense to come out of capital.
Right, I understand, but in here, I mean, the lady giving this was had a, you know, a lot of experience in finances, and it's not a lease. It says at the end of the term of the agreement, the school district owns all of the equipment.
Correct. It's, it's a great program. The way your program's set up, you're able to use general obligation bonds, and you're set up to be able to do that. GEO bonds are going to give you the lowest cost of capital. The equipment acquisition agreement's going to be an non-appropriation credit, so you're going to have to make a choice each year. Are you going to issue bonds to make the payment? Well, if you're going to issue bonds to make the payment, and you've got plenty of 8% debt limit, then there's no real good reason to do an equipment acquisition and use agreement for technology purchases.
Okay, that was my question.
It's a tool that's in the bag, but for your program, it's not a tool that we would recommend using or think that you would need to be using.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else, anyone? Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Thank you all. Y'all have a great night. Congratulations.
Great news. You can come back anytime with news like that. We're now going to go to 12.0, which is new business, and the, Dr. Powers, Ms. Garris, Mr. Oswald, Ms. Green and I all attended the virtual school law conference on August 21st, 22nd. And I was going to ask, Ms. Green, she is our government relations representative, if she would just kind of guide us on a little update on what we learned, and Ms. Green?
Sure. And usually, this conference was a lot different this year than it usually is. It was focused a lot more on federal law than local stuff, and almost all of it was COVID-related. We had an update on a number of Supreme Court cases that are kind of getting close to their place in the, in the pipeline, that are all, have the potential to affect schools and school policy and education rights and things like that. And then we talked, a lot of it was COVID-related, about sports and extracurriculars during the pandemic, and student employment issues during the pandemic. I did want to, and also IDEA and just all the issues associated with those services during the, you know, virtual and the shutdown and things like that. We also, I think several of us probably attended the webinars recently. There have been two that the School Board Association have done, has done. One was an entire hour about FAP, Free and Appropriate Public Education. You could actually talk for a full hour about FAP. Actually, you probably could talk for several days about FAP. And that was very interesting. And then, as Ms. Garris said, there was a webinar last week about, basically, the capital funds toolbox that is available to school districts. And that one was really in the weeds, but it was super interesting, because I'm convinced that you can never learn everything there is to know about school finance and how to pay for projects. One of the things I did want to mention as part of this is, usually at the school law conference, a big portion of time is spent talking about what the South Carolina General Assembly is going to be tackling. And right now, we're, in fact, the House was supposed to take up the budget today, and I was just texting with Kathy Manus, and they did not. The Senate did have the second reading of budget, and they passed it. And the House may or may not take it up tomorrow. As you know, the, the governor has asked them not to, and the Speaker tends to do what the governor asks, but we're crossing our fingers because it's very important, I mean, in my opinion, the General Assembly, the most important thing they do is pass a budget each year. And to just continue under the continuing resolution creates a lot of problems for us. Not only does it keep the step increase off the table, but it also, one of the things that the Senate did, which was very responsible, is in their budget, budget, they put $500 million in a set aside, because there's a, if things get worse with COVID after Election Day, the General Assembly is not permitted to come back and do any business after Election Day, because new people will have been elected. And so there will be this dead zone for a couple of months, and if for some reason there's a huge spike in the state, or there's some, you know, unexpected need, the Senate has responsibly set money aside to address that, in the event that there's basically a leadership vacuum for a couple of months. So that's kind of all out there. The House is going to meet tomorrow. If you have contact information for our House members, send them a text in the morning and say, hey, you really need to take up the budget. We, you know, we would really like that step increase to, to happen. I was going to ask, because the step increase is 50/50 right now, if there was a possibility of some sort of, you know, our, our teachers have really, just, actually, all of our staff, our school staff, the school bus drivers, the food service, our administrators, I can't imagine, I'm exhausted, and I'm not living at 24/7 like y'all are. And I just think it would be, especially if we can't get a step increase this year, if we could do some sort of a bonus for our staff members, some, a one-time thing, you know, the, the dilemma with a step increase is that we tie our, if it's not funded by the state, we tie ourselves to that cost ongoing. But it sure will be, I think, a morale builder for our staff, and well-deserved for the, just, I mean, the, as Dr. Smith said, the yeoman's work that they have done for the last few months. So I don't know, Mr. Salters, I'm putting that, this big idea to you, but I think, especially with a step increase being anything but certain at this point in time, if we could get some information about possibly doing something to, you know, kind of thank our staff and, you know, be there for them, at least a little bit financially.
Sure, we'll be happy to evaluate that and get back to you.
Surprise.
Ms. Green, kind of, what were you thinking about? What kind of dollars?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't really know what, a one-time thing, you know, a thousand dollars of, you know, that's a nice number that, that's significant, and it would mean something. And I think it would make a big difference. And it really is, I mean, I, they just, you know, we always talk about pay, and, you know, we want, we, we would, if we could, and if we had unlimited, you know, funds, we would, you know, certainly raise the pay of everybody all the time, because our, our staff, they deserve it. Their, their, their value to our mission is just unmeasurable. And so if we could do something that, you know, affirms them and, and thanks them for the work that they have done for the last few months, and, you know.
Well, even the parents that spoke tonight talked about our teachers and our staff are essential workers during this COVID-19.
I mean, it's just, you know, I, I, listening to all the testimony during the citizens' participation, you know, every single, I mean, I, I don't sleep well at night, because I'm thinking about, you know, should we do this, or should we do that? And I'm not, you know, I keep picturing the old video game like Super Mario Brothers, where it's like the little guy's just running, 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 and he's, he's having to leap and having to jump, and the game never ends. You just keep, and I just feel like that's the way it's been for the last six months. And I know Dr. Little and his staff feel that way. And so just anything that we could do, just to say, you know, we can't give you a break, but we can at least give you some appreciation, so.
Well, and two years ago, three years ago, we started an intentional journey with our budgeting process to raise teacher salaries, and we can't go out of step to the legislature. And I, I mean, I guess I understand why the legislature's doing what they're doing, but, but since they have decided to not pass a budget giving us a step increase, I think it'd be irresponsible for us to do a step increase without being locked tight, because that is an annual funding. That being said, I do think if we have enough room in our budget, a one-time bonus that would equal this year's step increase, at least that, or close to it, would make sense, and I'd be in support of that.
I think that's a great idea, too. That's why I voted down the budget, is because there wasn't a step increase. And even Kyle, way back then, mentioned a bonus, so I'm glad to see, the closer we get to November 3rd, we have some other board members hopping on board.
I can't support a step increase, because I can't do a tax increase to our constituents.
Do you know how much money we have left over every year that goes out of our general fund into our capital fund?
Yeah, but I, it just, it just wouldn't, I just can't do it with so many people out of work and furloughed, and just would be a hard year. Well, Jeff, if you'll just kind of get, see what's in the, what's left over in the budget and how you can work that out and report back to us, we would definitely love to follow up on Ms. Green's idea.
We'll be glad to do that.
Okay. At this time, thank you, Ms. Green. Did anybody want to add anything about that conference, other than what Ms. Green talked about?
They had a very good session on Title IX. Like, I'd learned a lot about.
We did learn a lot.
I mean, that was like drinking, you know, it was good.
Yeah. Okay, and I wanted to share that Anne Marie and I attended the Lexington County Council Midlands Strong, which is, we've got these, what are these things called?
Cling.
Yeah, cling. And if anybody wants some, I've got some extra ones. But we attended with, pretty much from all over the Midlands, all the mayors, all the police chiefs, all the sheriffs, all the legislators, school board members, county council, city council, and first responders. We had a lot of first responders. Lexington Medical Center had a huge presence, and it was just basically a thank you for what everyone's done in the Midlands to rally around COVID-19 and what we've done for our community. It was a really nice event. It was just a little get-together one morning, and it was hot as Hades. And we were all, it was almost 100, and we're all dressed up with our masks on, standing in the sun. So it was not a long meeting, I will tell you that. Board 13.0, our items for board information. For information only, we have your monthly general fund financial report for July 2020. We have your monthly general fund budget transfers for July 2020. We have your monthly capital projects report for July 2020. We have your monthly unauthorized procurement's report, reports for July 2020. We also have our quarterly grants award report. And at this time, I, I would like to wish Mr. Anderson, he is still recuperating from his surgery, and he was not able to be with us tonight, because he's just, he's just having a hard time. So if y'all will keep Mr. Anderson in your thoughts and prayers, and he said, hopefully, he's going to try his best to be at the next meeting or two. And then our last item is adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Sunday.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Oswald. All in favor, please stand up, and we will see you next Tuesday night.